At this time, I call to order a joint meeting of the Crew Planning Commission and the Crew Town Council for a public hearing. If we stand, join me in the Lord's Prayer, please. My Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day daily bread, and give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. It is not temptation, but deliverance to the people of the kingdom, and the house of the Lord forever and ever. Amen. Would join me in the prayer? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Allow me to read the call for the public notice, the public hearing. The Town Council of the Town of Crew and the Town of Crew Planning Commission will hold a joint public hearing on August 13th, 2018 at 7:00 PM, or as soon thereafter it may be held, at the Crew Library and Conference Center. The Town Council will take public comment regarding the proposed conditional use permit for certain parcels of property pursuant to Virginia Code Section 15.2-2204. Such property is described as tax numbers 18A 42-4-3, 18A 48-1-12C, 18A 48-1-13, 18A 49-1-10, 18A 49-1-11, and 18A 49-3-10. The parcels are located in the Town of Crew, Virginia. The application for the conditional use permit submitted by Luckstone Corporation is available at the Town Office for review. The public hearing is to hear comments regarding a proposed conditional use permit submitted in conjunction with a request to allow a permitted use of crushed stone operation. The requested conditional use permit includes 22 conditions that are set forth fully in the application from Luckstone Corporation. Interested persons may appear at the aforementioned time and place to present their views. It is the Town of Crew's intention to comply with the ADA, the American Disabilities Act. Accommodations for disabled persons can be made with the office of the Town Manager by calling the appropriate number at least five days prior to the hearing date. Any people with additional inquiries should call the Town Hall, Wade Walker, Town Manager. Are there any individuals that are disabled that cannot hear adequately? Are there any individuals outside that need help getting into the room? Very good. With that in mind, this will work in three phases. Luckstone has comments they wish to make, then I have a presentation I intend to give that will outline many of the issues that have been raised in the last two or three public hearings and discussions around town, and then we will go into the public comment portion. Individuals will be restricted to three minutes on their comments so we can move on. We've got a lot of folks, and I'm sure everybody wants to talk. At this time, I will turn it over to Mayor Whip Wilson, who is the Chairman of the Planning Commission.
Evening, everybody. Evening. Good to see everybody here this evening. We're just having a dog and cat issue tonight. We know we don't get to this bigger crowd than if we have a dog issue, but welcome everybody. This time, I'd like to turn it over to Luckstone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, members of the Commission. My name is John Riley, Land Use Director for Luckstone. Our office is located at 515 Stone Mill Drive, Manneken, Sabbath, Virginia. We're excited to be here this evening, and excited to talk about this opportunity to request approval for a conditional use permit to allow mining activities within the Crew Industrial Park. Upon approval from the Council, as well as the Notaway County Quarry Supervisors, it would be the culmination of an extensive due diligence period process for Luckstone and the beginning of what would be a long-lasting relationship between Luckstone and the Town of Crew. We're confident this is a relationship that's going to be very beneficial for the Town of Crew and its citizens, Notaway County and its citizens, and Luckstone for years to come. The search process for this quarry began nearly three years ago. We reviewed over a dozen sites, drilled over a dozen sites, to evaluate and identify one that had the appropriate aggregate material for mining and the correct combination of logistical features, railroad, access that we needed for our intended use. We were fortunate to find a site that not only meets our needs, but can provide significant benefits to the community where we will operate. The quarry will provide a substantial revenue stream through royalty payments to the Town of Crew for the life of the quarry, which could be 75 years or more, as well as significant tax revenue to Notaway County through real estate sales and machinery and tools taxes. We've had a number of meetings, and there have been a number of legitimate concerns that have been expressed by the citizens of the town as well as Notaway County. These are concerns that we do not take lightly. Luckstone is a family-owned, family-operated business that's been in operation for over 95 years, including over 80 in Notaway County. We're part of the community in all the locations where we operate, and we have a responsibility and obligation to be a good neighbor and address the concerns that have been raised. In addition to the now three public hearings that have been held to discuss this project, we hosted a community information session at the Crew Community Center on May 24th. We attended a community meeting at the Four Picket Officers Club on July 12th, had numerous in-person and phone conversations with residents. These conversations have all been an effort to provide the public with as much information and address as many of the concerns that have been expressed as possible. The primary concerns that have been raised are related to potential impacts to Lazaretta Creek, the Town of Crew's water supply, physical impacts to homes and wells, impacts to the health of the community, and effects on property values. As I mentioned, these are legitimate concerns and ones that we take seriously. However, they are all concerns that can and will be mitigated. We have and will continue to provide information to the community regarding how our impacts will be mitigated, be happy to address those this evening. Luckstone's operations are highly regulated and heavily monitored to ensure that there are no negative impacts on the surrounding community. The Virginia Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy permits, regulates, and monitors our mining operation. Virginia Department of Environmental Quality permits, regulates, and monitors any impact on air and water resources. The Federal Mine and Safety Health Administration monitors the safety and operation of our workers. The Town of Crew in Notaway County will monitor the operation to ensure Luckstone is upholding the commitments made with respect to the conditions that are going to be approved as a part of this application. These are just four examples of the host of regulatory agencies monitoring the operation to ensure there are no negative impacts on the community. In addition to the regulatory process, Luckstone holds itself to a very high standard, sets internal policies and guidelines that exceed those imposed by the regulatory agencies, and ensure that the impacts, any potential impacts to the community are mitigated, that we maintain what we refer to as our social license to operate. We are members of the communities where we work, and are and will remain proud to be associated with Luckstone. And in order for Luckstone to continue to be successful, we must be responsible and active in support of our communities. So we thank the Commission and the Council for their time and consideration, and we look forward to moving the project forward. If there are any questions that come up this evening, we'd be happy to address those and hope to be able to provide as adequate answers as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Everybody else in Luckstone have a comment?
Sir.
Mr. Mayor?
All right. Good deal. I need to get that piece of slide out of the way there.
It might be on the TV, and so.
Oh, yeah.
New technology.
We just got this, so we're experimenting with it. This was a great opportunity to do it. For those of you that don't know, I'm Greg Ains. I'm a longtime resident of Notaway County. I was actually raised in Crew and Berkle. Raised in Crew and Berkle. So I grew up next to Luckstone all my life. They're not new to me. They're not new to me at all. I'm also a teacher. I teach at Hampton-Sydney College part-time, and I taught at Random Henry High School a little bit. So I like to get up, walk around, and talk to people, as you like to say. What I'm going to give you tonight is a briefing, and this is actually directed towards the Planning Commission. But a lot of the questions that you have asked are covered in this briefing. I'm sure that will come up again. We see Luckstone as a foundation for Crew's future. As members of Council, we have a responsibility, not just to today, but for tomorrow, and the next generation, and the generation after that. It's our job, in part, to lay the infrastructure, to put it in place, so that our children and our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren will have opportunities, not just for jobs, but for careers. We have to lay the groundwork for tax revenues, so we can keep your real estate taxes down. We have to lay the groundwork for tax revenues, so we can keep your personal property taxes down. We have to lay the groundwork for taxes, so that we can help pay for our schools and the other services that we get. What I'm talking about tonight is not just me. Every member of Town Council has been involved with this for over 22 months. All the questions that have been raised were raised by members of Council at some point in time.
That was a former Council.
Former Council, yes. Two. We've got two new ones. Mr. Randle? What have I do with it? And Ms. Bowen, Wendy Bowen could not be here tonight. She did leave a letter in support of Luckstone ordinance change. So with that in mind, let me go through. This is the area of operations, and this is what I'm going to talk to you about tonight. We're going to talk about the area of operations itself within the Crew Industrial Park, going to give you a little background on this, which is talk about the various issues that were raised and the mitigators. Because everything that's been raised has got a law that regulates it, or practices that mitigate any potential problems. On top of that, there are good industrial practices that are exercised by Luckstone to make sure bad things don't happen. Why? Because it's in their interest. It's in their interest to see that your wells don't collapse and that foundations are not destroyed. We're also going to talk about economic impacts, because it's important. You have to understand how all this works. You look right here, this shaded area. Yeah, come on, there we go. It won't show up. All right. The shaded area is where the rock quarry will be. If you look just to the top of that shaded area, you see a little blue line. That's Lazaretta Creek. If you see, look to the right, you will see a road. That is the main road going into the industrial park. That B is Route 49. That road off to the left, that's Solomon Road. How many Solomon Road residents here we have? There you go. All right, good. Luckstone discovered that rock some time ago, and they approached the Town of Crew because they wanted to find it. We negotiated over, what, 19 months roughly? And the reason we negotiated 19 months, and we did it in a manner consistent with law, but the reason we negotiated over 19 months is because we have a responsibility to our citizens to get the best deal that we can, because we represent our citizens. They are the stockholders in our community. We are being the board directors. We had a meeting on the 25th. The Planning Commission meeting was on the 17th. And oh, by the way, on the 25th, that is what triggered, the Planning Commission meeting on the 25th is what triggered everything. You had to have that meeting before Luckstone can draw requests for permits. So we had to agree to settle the land before they could begin the permitting process, and that's what has followed on. They have applied for the permits. That led to the Notaway County Planning Commission meeting on the 17th, which is tabled recommendations. They meet again tomorrow night, and then the Crew Planning Commission and the Council meetings for tonight. So this is all part of the process. These are the biggest issues that have been identified. What is the threat to water wells? What is the threat to home foundations? What about earth tremors? And what about flying rock? It is not in Luckstone's interest to send dynamite into a rock pile and have rock flying everywhere, because it breaks things. On top of that, they lose luck. They have a unique way of doing this business now. Everything that you're worried about right there is mitigated by law, technology, and modern industrial practices. But they do that. They use.
In DME, DMME, as it records.
They do that. You got your blaster here?
Right here.
How do you blast? Explain the blast.
We already heard it over and over and over.
Okay. They blast the rock. They've been cited for it. So don't stand there telling people they don't do it, they do do it. I am the force of it. The most important thing is that blasters are state-certified, and their shots have to be low-impact. Luckstone offers homeowners a third-party engineering survey. If you are within a half-mile of that facility, they will contact you automatically. However, you still need to make application. There is a process, and they will give you that. But it's basically, you tell them you want a third-party engineering survey, they kind of look at your foundation, they kind of look at your well. They have a third party do it. It's not Luckstone doing it. They hire somebody that you agree with. You agree that they're good, and they will come in and do what has to be done. They offer the same survey to people outside of that distance that requested. A condition of this permit is that they will fix what they break. If they break it, they buy it. It's that simple. Three paragraphs, 11, 12, and 13. Now, this is small, so you won't be able to read it all, but the bottom line is those three paragraphs, if they break it, they fix it, or cause it to be fixed, or replace it. That means if their work causes your well to cave in, they're going to drill you a new well. That's part of the conditions. All right. I wanted to show you this picture. This is the picture of the Bosse Bell Plant up in Goose Run. Many of you have had an opportunity to go up there. Some people have not taken that opportunity to go up there. Home values range anywhere from $250,000 to over $600,000. That group, that line, is a 2,300-foot distance. Down here, at about 1,100-foot distance, are houses that are $370,000 and $560,000. Their real estate values did not decline. They haven't had any problems. One guy, one guy made a false statement, or a statement that turned out to be false. He claimed that blasting upset his foundation. On investigation, it turned out he was just trying to gather somebody for money. You can address that, I think, right?
What was that man's name?
Genova. Genova? Phil?
It's a TV remote.
TV remote? Can you get?
Over to upgrade later.
All right. Upgrade later.
There you go.
What I wanted to show you, though, is that you have peaceful coexistence between an industrial rock quarry and high-dollar homes. Can you back me up?
You're going to have to do it on that.
All right, yeah. Yeah, stay there. Noise. Noise is regulated by state law. Whatever they do, it's got to be consistent with state and federal law. Blasting is going to be limited between 9:30 in the morning and 5:00 in the afternoon. Blast lasts less than a second, and that minimizes the noise pollution. It's quieter with the train to come through Crew on a 24-hour-a-day basis. Luck's internal policies, this is their internal policies. Call for a blast, and it's less than half, less than half of that is allowed by state law. Blast are limited to once a week or no more than twice during a 10-day period. Slide, please. Two big issues for raise, dust and water. Again, state law regulates dust abatement processes or practices. That truck up there, all it does all day long is water down the entire Luck compound. They have to keep the dust down. Why? Because it's the law. If they violate the law, they get shut down. If they get shut down, they don't make money. People don't work. They don't want that. They're going to obey the law. Water from the site is going to allow the suppression, or wet suppression. They've also got some dry-dust techniques that they use. According to the Virginia Department of Mine and Minerals, Luck goes above, over and above what's required. The dust abatement is what eliminates health threats. The working environment is so safe that many employees at Luck don't even wear a protective gear. That's how safe it is. Virginia state law and Department of Environmental Quality regulate water. The water that will be discharged into Lazaretta Creek has to be treated or cleaned to DEQ standards before it can even go in there, just like we do with sewage water. All the sewage. They cannot operate without a permit. The permit comes from the state. If they don't obey the rules, they don't get a permit. If they don't get a permit, people don't work, Luck doesn't make money. It's in their interest to obey the law. There is no danger of pollution to Lazaretta Creek. There is no danger to Town of Crew water lines. Town of Crew's water lines are old, but they're still good. The biggest dangers that we have, the biggest dangers that we have. The biggest dangers, the biggest dangers we have in our water lines is when we have sub-freezing temperatures in winter, and they defrost, and then we get cracks in the pipes. That and the Virginia Department of Transportation. Because every time the Virginia Department of Transportation has to approve a road, they're out there with these machines that are banging the roads, and then cracks the pipes. On top of that, we have a benefit with water. The water they pump out is going to help us at Crystal Lake every year when it's hot. It hasn't been that hot this year. But every year when we have a drought, in the July, August time frame, we have to go on water rationing. What happens when we water ration? You can't wash your car, you can't water your lawn, you can't do a lot of the things, you can't water your garden. Well, we don't just serve the Town of Crew with water. We serve three state facilities. We serve Notaway Cornhouse, and we serve about four schools. If you look at our total number of water customers or consumers, it's about 8,200 people. We are at the limit of our ability to provide water to those 8,200 people, and that might increase with this new addition over at the Virginia Behavioral System. We might get 500 additional people. So we're at the limit. We need this water. We need that water that's going to be pumped out of this quarry, because it's going to help the Town of Crew provide for its water consumers and everybody that lives in town, and a lot of people that don't live in town are consumers of that water, particularly the folks at the school and prisons and the sex predator unit and the, oh, what's the other place? Hey, I'm not P-Bot. It's okay. Slide. Radon. Somebody said radon was a threat. Radon is not a threat. It is not a threat. Radon results when rocks decay in enclosed spaces, and you get the radon gas. That's where it gets into the basements. Generally, that's where you find it. It's going to be in basements or some of those coal mining shafts that have other gases in them. My father's were coal miners. My grandfather's were coal miners from the Gulf County, West Virginia. So I'm very familiar with coal mines and black lung. And if we thought this was going to bring black lung here or any other thing, we wouldn't be supporting it, okay? The fact is that radon is only available in enclosed spaces. According to the United States Government, open pits are not enclosed spaces. Radon gas is not a threat. This is an open-pit quarry. Slide, please. Road traffic was expressed as a concern. We expect 10 to 15 trucks per day coming out of the Route 49 entrance. Most of the rock will be shipped by rail. That's why they were at the county, because they needed a rail spur, room to put a rail spur in. And that's why they have to come in down that 600 feet, so they can put a rail spur down the current rail line. Because they have to have this train, cargo, boxcars, not boxcars, who do you call?
Gondolas.
Gondolas, where they can load up the rock. And once they get 100 cars loaded, I guess they're going to ship them right down to Tidewater. Homeowner insurance. Rock quarries have no bearing on your homeowner insurance rate, and I've got that verified by three homeowners insurance companies. Okay? We checked on that. It's not going to increase your rates, but if they do, the advice that was given to me was find another policy given.
Excluded. I mean, homeowners don't cover it, so it's excluded.
Cemetery. This also has been a concern. People were worried about the Town of Crew cemetery. The Town of Crew cemetery is a little over three football fields from where the nearest point of the quarry will be. It's about 1,095 feet. That is the newest piece where that little square is. That's the newest piece of the cemetery where burials are taking place. Once that gets filled up, we will move across the road, so it will be another 200 feet that way. The cemetery is also protected by state law. We have a tree line buffer there to protect the view shed. We can also, if we need to plant additional trees, provide some noise protection. On top of that, on top of that, Luck has agreed to not have any blasting done when there's a people. I want to work with them. They don't have to do that. They offer that. They offer that. Slide, please. Job creation. All right. Let's move into the next part. This is the economic impact. We're looking at 35, when they get fully operational, up to 35 jobs, and these jobs pay well. But working for Luck is not just a job, it is a career. There are men today that are project managers or quarry managers that started at the bottom. Now, to me, that's a great opportunity for a young man or woman from Notaway County. And we want to provide that opportunity. The estimates are also, there's a study out that says for every quarry job, nearly five jobs, like 4.7, 4.8, additional jobs are created. Those additional jobs are truck drivers, contractors, in the restaurant field, the food of retail industry. So we're looking at maybe 170 indirect jobs. Now, I think that's overly optimistic, but even if we got 1/10 of that, even if we got 1/10 of that, wouldn't 17 new jobs in Crew be good? Think about it. I would think so. We don't want to deny people the opportunity to work. And with Luckstone, it's not just a job, it is a career. It is a career. You could stay there for 20 years or 30 years and earn a pension, and earn a trade, and learn a trade, and there's upward mobility. Slide, please. Now, one of the things that we never talk about hardly is job preservation. Preserving existing jobs is just as important as creating new jobs. I took a poll. I went to every, every small business in this town to find out, every small business that could possibly get some residual benefit from new activity, mainly the food and retail industry. But I wanted to know, how many employees do you actually have? And oh, by the way, how many are minorities? That interested me. You can't see those numbers necessarily, but we have 224 people in the food industry and other industries or other jobs, occupations, that might benefit a little bit from new traffic. That's 224 people. 89% of those, 198 are minorities. They're African-Americans, they're Asian-Americans, they're Latino, they're Southwest Asians. And I have two Asians. These are people out there working every day in these shops in Crew. New activity in the Crew Industrial Park is going to create new business opportunities that will help preserve their jobs. That's why we encourage people to shop at home.
Well. Let's go to the end of mini-haul.
Private enterprise is what creates jobs, not government.
We got a grocery store.
That's a separate issue. You and I can talk on that later. But my point is that I've got people out here working every day on that main drag and off the main drag that will benefit from new traffic, new traffic. Lot of eating establishments. Slide, please. And oh, by the way, every dollar spent in town rotates somewhere between eight and 15 times, exchange of hands, somewhere between eight and 15 times. That's a rule of thumb used by chambers of commerce. That's a rule of thumb used by chambers of commerce. Now, let's talk about the increased tax revenues. The Burkeville operation, of the Burkeville operation, eighty thousand dollars a year paid in tax revenues to Nottaway County. That money, that money, most of that money goes to support the public school system. That money also goes to pay for others, other...
For the bigger...
Eighty thousand. Okay? That's, that's for Nottaway County. Burkeville, the town of Burkeville gets over, and that's a little over, I mean, it varies a little. But the town of Burkeville gets fifty thousand dollars. On top of that, Prince Edward is a new operation, so we ask for the tax revenues out. The Prince Edward Quarry, which actually sits in the quarry, and it's only been open about a year, generates over seventy-five thousand dollars a year for the county coffers. And a good chunk of that money goes to the school system. The Prince Edward, and this, the sales tax for Prince Edward this year, up to the first of July, so for the first half of the year, forty thousand dollars. So you'll probably get another forty thousand by the second half of the year. So you're looking at what? Roughly a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in tax revenues from that quarry for county operations. Crew will do the same. Why? Because the way they've got it planned out, the pit is in the crew industrial park. The land in the county is where they're going to have most of the taxable stuff, the, the equipment and things that get taxed. That's where that's going to be. So the county will actually get the bulk of the money from that. Now, Crew, Luck also supports local businesses. The Burkeville operation's spent over two-and-a-half million dollars with sixty vendors in this area. Two-and-a-half million. Now, for every dollar that goes in, you have that eight to fifteen changeover, so let's just pick the number ten. You're looking at a quarter million dollar economic impact in this week, just from the Burkeville operation.
Norwood.
Yes, ma'am. Burkeville's got an operation. So that's, that's just local vendors they've worked with. Burkeville, they've also donated money to the volunteer fire department in Burkeville. They donate to the emergency squad and they support the crew volunteer fire departments by K-Rod. So these are active community folks. This is a corporation that looks at the community, that participates in the community and supports the community. Now, that's also, what we also anticipate is that our residual tax revenues are going to increase with our meals taxes, our sales taxes, and our cigarette taxes. We make about a quarter of a million dollars a year in meals taxes. Every time you go to Hardee's, you go to Big T, you pay a meals tax. That meals tax comes into the Towne Crew. What does it do for us? It helps us pay for services, but at the same time, it helps us keep a lid on the real estate and the personal property taxes of the people that live in town. Our job in part is to make business, be a business-friendly environment, but also to keep the taxes down on our folks, the folks that live here. So we anticipate all those numbers will go up. The cigarette tax, about eighty-six thousand dollars is what we anticipate. Well, I'm, I'm sure a lot of those guys driving the trucks are cigarette smokers, so, well, that'll probably jack up too. Residual taxes, residual taxes are an important element of any business because it keeps real estate prices down and it keeps your personal property taxes down. It reduces the taxpayer's financial burden to the government. County government benefits from tax revenues, real estate, personal property, and sales taxes. And when they benefit, the schools benefit. Where do you think the general revenue funds comes from, or the school gets its money? It gets its money from the Nottaway County Board of Supervisors, Ellen. Right? Okay. So whatever taxes go into the general revenue fund will be dispersed ultimately, most of it, much of it, to the school system. In addition, there will be employment taxes. And these employment taxes are going to be generated by three or four generations of local people who work in Luck Stone. Ladies and gentlemen, our children will benefit from this. Not only will they benefit with low taxes and more money for their schools, but they will benefit because they will have an opportunity to get jobs that are careers. They don't have to run off to Richmond anymore. They don't have to run off to Norfolk. Because our, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to create an opportunity for our children and our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren. And none of us want to rob them of that chance. Slide please. So what are the benefits of the Towne Crew? By the way, that picture, that's a rock quarry after it's been used. It's a reservoir now.
Where is that located?
That's in Knoxville, Tennessee. I got another one, we'll show you in a minute. All right. What does the Towne Crew get out of this? Why did it take us nineteen months to negotiate this? Because we, the stewards of the town and the county, or excuse me, our town taxpayer, wanted to make sure that we did our job for our residents, our stockholders, our board of, we're the board of directors, the stockholders of our citizens. That's who we work for. That's who we work for. We negotiated nineteen months because we wanted to get the best deal possible. Guess what? We got it. We got it.
So it's settled?
No, it all settled.
Three percent, three percent of all rock, of the residuals of all rock sold will come to the Towne Crew. It'll be paid on a quarterly basis. Now, that could exceed, over the life of the pit, that could exceed ten million dollars. And I think it's going to be much higher than that. What can we do with that ten million dollars? Well, we can hire a new police officer, we can hire somebody to write grants. We know our needs, we know our needs. We can hire, we can hire somebody to write grants. I've got, I've got councilmen. Look, we were missing out on a lot of money because we don't have full-time grant rights. This will give us that opportunity to put somebody back in on payroll. Yeah, it will give us an opportunity. I got the floor.
Let me ask you a question while you're talking about that grant right. Who pays for that?
We do.
Taxpayers.
Yes, yes. But, that's with us one problem. Sir, I got the floor. I got the floor. All right. In addition to that, we get two thousand tons of crushed stone annually. That crushed stone can be used to improve our alleyways and our streets. That, that relieves a burden of financing on the, on the citizen taxpayer. In other words, that two thousand tons of rock, they don't have to pay for it because we're getting it for free. All right? Water, we talked about the water going into Lazarata Creek. That, that is going to be a benefit because it ups, ups the level of the water and relieves our need for rationing during drought. If they strike a well, we get access to the well. That provides a backup to crew consumers and then a future reservoir. Once that quarry is abandoned, it will become a reservoir. That reservoir will provide a permanent source of water for the Towne Crew and the surrounding area, a reliable source of water that we don't have to worry about drying up on us. It will provide, it will also provide an outdoor recreational opportunity and even, even to dry hydrate site, if you want to go that drill down that far, but even to dry hydrate site for fire protection. Okay? Slide please. We have an opportunity to have an impact for the next hundred years of Towne Crew residents. That's what we're looking at. We have to look to the future. A quarry sets a stage for crew's follow-on. We have a comprehensive plan in the Towne Crew. How many crew residents do we have in here? Towne Crew residents, okay. We have a comprehensive plan. It's online if you want to read it. Their comprehensive plan calls for green spaces. It calls for, for improving the looks of the town. It calls for eliminating blight. Did anybody see that Nashville looking house outside, right over here? That's abandoned? It has to be torn down. You know how much it costs to tear down a house? Costs a lot of money. We don't have that kind of money to tear down every blighted house. But it's on our list to get rid of them because they devalue personal property taxes, they devalue the neighborhood, and turn it into a rotten place. And we have to fix that. And it takes money to fix that. As far as, as far as tourism development goes, we see, one of the things that most folks don't understand is that rural parks, like Twin Lakes, Stanton River, Bucanice, they bring in over a hundred thousand tourists a year. Now quarry, once it becomes a reservoir, will allow us to develop an outdoor recreational opportunity for day trips out of Richmond, Petersburg, Lynchburg. People travel all over to hike. My wife and I do it. We do it all the time. One of the things that we're looking at is, is that development. What you see here pictured is a quarry also in Knoxville, Tennessee, that is used for fishing, is used for boating, is used for swimming, is used for all sorts, it's used for hiking around the area. Now, I'm not going to be allowed to see it, nobody in this river is going to be allowed to see it. But it's in the plan. We have a plan. It's there. We also, we also want to be sensitive to those of you that don't want to live next to a quarry. Will we buy you out? Well, let me tell you something. There's no reason we have to wait, and I have to bring us up with council, but there's no reason we have to wait on development of the park. We can start that now. There is grant money available. There's even money out there where you can develop a model farm for agricultural use or use it for education for kids, because some kids have never seen a cow milk before. They've never had the joy of pulling the back up. They have never seen, you know, some of those things. I said that time, Mr. Jay Guy. The point is, the point is that we can develop a model farm, we can develop an outdoor recreational opportunity for use for education as well as relaxation. Recreational tourism has a significant impact on supporting educational opportunities, job preservation, job creation, and of course, local tax revenues. So it has its place. And we see that, this council sees that. We have been discussing this for two years, over two years. And that's why we want this quarry, Luck Stone to face. Slide please. All right, this is what we covered, area of operations, background issues raised, and economic impacts. Mr. Chairman? I'm done. You have it.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I appreciate it. Sorry that we don't have enough proceedings, Level One. Next part of the public hearing is the public comment. I've been informed that you would please limit your comments to three minutes, which would certainly be greatly appreciated. So the floor is now open for comments. If you would, raise your hand, I'll recognize you, and if you repeat your name, I'll state your name, and for the record, we'll move on. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Peggy Turner. We live very close to the quarry site. Mr. Mayor and members of council and the commission members, we ask that you try to empathize with us who are concerned about our homes and wells. No, we are not just concerned, we are worried, very worried. Please listen with your mind and heart to all we have to say. Think how you would be feeling if this was going to be close to your home. By the way, it's likely to hurt Crew Baptist Church. We need to be validated as the good citizens we are. We need a government we can work with. Some of us have a better idea for the industrial park if people choose to work with us. We feel we are subservient, that you are in complete control of our lives and the situation. We deserve more. We deserve, deserve a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. You all had the power to control the distribution of information that we should have had two years ago. This is government by the few and justice for some, not all. This is not democracy.
No. Thank you, Ms. Turner. I appreciate that. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of Town Council. My name is Johnny Paddus, property owner, soon to be full-time resident in Crew. I did not submit an agenda to there while I limited my time to crew management. I was born in Crew and I live here and graduated from high school. After military, I serve in Maryland and was blessed with such a career spanning forty-two years in Potomac Electric Power Company. In two thousand eight, I bought a purchase a home in Crew. Recently, I became aware of the Luck Stone planning and operation rock quarry in Crew and its benefits. What I have not heard, however, is Luck Stone planning to ensure operation of, of the plant proposal with little or no bad health or safety consequence for crew residents. Further, I would like to know if there is a plan in place, a qualified project manager hired by Crew, and a written policy and procedures performing oversight of Luck's operation and to make this periodic report to Crew leadership. So that as a resident can be comfortable that they are following state and federal environmental protection agents, EPA, regulations regarding dust and prevention of water, soil contamination. Finally, there's an old saying, for those who plan to fail, for those who fail to plan, plan to fail. I am therefore asked that the town resident be given opportunity to hear, opportunity to hear and review plans as to how we will be kept safe during the operation of this plan. And Mr. Mayor and councils will be ensured that they do what they say they will do.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Paddus. Are there others? Yes, ma'am?
I need your approach, sort of give some facts sheets.
Please.
Thank you.
I am an adjoining landowner to the industrial park. I object to the quarry difficulty in the industrial park. I have attended every meeting that has been held regarding the Towne Crew in Luck Stone. I have listened to the mayor of Crew and Luck Stone answer questions in a manner that benefits Luck Stone. After investigating on my own, I have found that Luck Stone's claim that they have never been shut down, received only a couple of violations and no complaints is untrue. I have copied a report from DMME. In those reports, you will find complaints and violations that are quite significant. Over the past three years, they have received ten complaints, nine violations. Two of those violations were received due to two deaths that occurred on their jobs fights. And Luck Stone did not report the deaths promptly to DMME regulations. Luck Stone seems to have an issue with reporting incidents to DMME. As regulations, I can give you one shot again. You can have one, there you go. He probably got one. All right, Luck Stone seems to have an issue with reporting incidents to DMME as regulations require because another violation was given or not reporting a serious injury per DMME regulations. Luck Stone has said over and over again their employees were number one. But by these actions, it does not seem that it's true. There's also another violation due to flying rock. Yet Luck Stone says they have no flying rock. They were shut down for flying rock according to DMME violations. So Luck Stone, are you feeding a ship of coded information that is not being a so-called good neighbor? Okay. Mayor Eames and Mr. Walker, this is not misleading information. I have my information in black and white from the DMME office. What is going on between the Towne Crew and Luck Stone is not political, and it's not political. This is a matter of the health and welfare and well-being of the citizens of Nottaway County as a whole, not just the town, as a whole. This is about...
And as I was told when I grow up, "Oh, you're from across the tracks. You don't live in town." Well, I found out across the tracks was the place to be because that's where this town started, and I'm proud of it. And have researched it a lot. You know, you lose your family, you start searching more and more. Radon, the mayor said something about that. I called my insurance company and they told me that anytime you have a quarry to come into the area, that they check out the demographics and rock quarries make them go up. And that's what I was told, all I can tell you. They didn't tell me I'd lose my coverage. They told me that premiums go up and all companies from time to time check demographics. The Radon, I got that information from the Camps Institute and the Virginia Department of Health, and I had spoken about that before. We need to remember that we have a government, just like Ms. Turner said, we the people. Thomas Jefferson wrote the Declaration of Independence, and we are endowed by the annual and annual of rights like liberty and pursuit of happiness. A rock quarry does not do us this. And our government is of the people, by the people, for the people. And all of you that are elected and sitting up there here tonight in these seats, as planning commission or council, you were either appointed to the commission or you were elected to the council and the people elected. Please listen to them. I know you're trying to find industries, but I hope you will seriously give this a thought. We need industries. We want our children to be able to grow up and live here. But look around the room. We won't be here in fifty years. None of us. I'm almost seventy-one years old. We need industries that have, that are good and clean and they pay jobs, that are decent, that children can come back to work, not just minimum wage. New companies are out there. Companies are coming back to America all the time from overseas. You know, it used to be you lost your jobs because you went overseas. Now those jobs are coming back to America. Let's shop and look. Let's just don't destroy what we have and don't destroy our heritage. To me, that's it, the lie about the town. Put a rock quarry in there, we're going to have it. Our lifetime is a big hope. We'll be gone. We'll be gone by the time we make a part of it. The people who spoke to, please listen to them. Don't destroy what we've worked hard to build all our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I appreciate that. Yes, sir, Mr. Jenkins.
Mayor, Councilman, my name is Howard Jenkins. I represent myself and my wife, Margie. When you had your first picture of you on your screen, the clearing that you saw in this corner, that's me and the Eleven Oaks Baptist Church. I live right there at the rock quarry, not as close as the Turners', but I live close. We are against it for health hazards. No matter what you say about the dust, there's still going to be dust in the air for those of us that live close by. The blasting of the rock is going to affect these people that live down the road. It's going to affect their wells. People in Prince Edward are already affected by the wells. If we have to take these folks to court, they're going to come by. They volunteered to come by and inspect your home, take pictures of your home. And three years down the road, if I have a crack in my house and I call them, they're going to send an independent contractor over to check my house. But then I got to go to court. I'm retired on fixed income. I don't have the money to go to court. Is the town going to help me? No, no, you're not. We're concerned about the main water line that comes in the Crewe. It runs right on the railroad. And it is an old line. There's been many breaks down around the Johnson Dairy. These, all the concerns of the people, the old structures in town, the Baptist church built in, rebuilt in nineteen sixteen. That's a beautiful structure for the rock quarry as close as it is. And, you know, they say you're going to hear a little boom, you might hear a little boop and might feel just a little shake. Well, a little shake ever bothered me. But what's it going to do to those houses that can't move around, that the bellies don't bounce? What's it going to do to them, especially those of us that live close by? That's my concern and the concern of these folks here. I don't remember, I know you had one meeting for the people of the town. I personally feel like you should have had more. I wish I had. I missed the meeting that you had, and that's my fault. I could have spoke, would have spoke then. But that's my concern, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You opened a bunch of cannibal worms that I'd like to get into, but especially on the street. By the way, I live on the only good street in town. When I called for snow removal, I didn't get it because the town trucks had to go out of town.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Yes, sir.
My name is Lee Ball. I'm a joining property owner to the proposed quarry site. I'd like to approach. The mayor said he likes to deal with facts. I do too. So I'm going to give you some pictures of what Lazarida Creek looks like if you haven't ever been down there. And in my opinion, and in the opinion of the DMME inspector, you're getting ready to create a problem you don't want. My property line is almost one-half mile long, and it joins the industrial park the entire way. The property line is in the middle of Lazarida Creek. And I'm opposed to a rock quarry being located in the industrial park because of the problems that runs with it, such as disease, lung disease. Mr. Mayor, you talk about black lungs. Well, I'm an old mountain boy too. My daddy was a coal miner. And people think because they work in coal mines, they get rock dust and, or black lungs may die. It's a combination of rock dust and coal dust. You got to have the rock dust in order for that mine to function because if you don't put the rock dust down inside the mine, methane gas builds up and it blows up. Ask Mr. Blankenship up there in West Virginia. He killed twenty-nine people. But it's disease, excessive noise. Y'all act like you're going to put a bunch of rail cars in over there, gelondellers or gravel cars, and dump styrofoam in them. Rocks make a noise, a terrible noise. And you say it's going to be controlled? I won't lay down asleep. I won't hear it in my boom, 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 boom. Nobody else does either. The water problems, it's almost a guarantee to have water problems. As I said, in the planning commission, southwest Virginia, go up to Buckhannon County, Dixon County, Wise County, the western part of Russell County. And ask them people that used to go out to the spring and get a cup of water or get something out of their well, where they're getting their water from, it's been pumped or piped into them from almost out of Kentucky, out of John Flanagan Dam because between rock quarries and coal mines, they sunk everybody's water. And the people can't do nothing about it because the way the lobbyists feed the pockets of the politicians, the laws are written to where you can't do anything about it, just like it is with a rock quarry. I don't know what John is saying, and I believe what Mr. Riley said, but if I have a problem with explosions, I have cracks, even if I call DMME, they're going to run down there, they're going to run in there, they're going to look at the size of the grass. And then they're going to look at the video to see what the explosion done. They're going to come back and say, oh, they were within compliance. They're always in compliance. It's the way the laws are written. It's time for that to halt. I'll never live alone unless I see it, but you can believe it, I'll fight it. It also affects farms, ponds, and sheds. And it destroys an entire neighborhood. The sale of water to Notaway County Complex, Notaway Schools, Piedmont Geriatric Hospital, Burkeville Prison, Sexual Behavior Center, some county residents, all Crewe businesses, and all Crewe town residents, that's a daily necessity for survival. Water sales keeps the town of Crewe afloat. And you know it. And it's, as I stated, it is something that every human being must have every day to remain alive. I'm talking about life here. I'm not talking about dollar bills. These pictures will show, if you look at them, that there are numerous places in Lazarida Creek where the water is flowing over the solid rock covering the entire width of Lazarida Creek. When and if Luckstone is allowed to extract mineral a hundred feet from the property lines, the force from those explosions to break up the rock will probably cause the rocks moving across Lazarida Creek. The crack causes the water to be sucked into the cracks, and then it goes into the rock quarry, then it gets further contaminated, then they pump it up the hill to a holding pond and a settlement pond. And then later on, they let some of that water out, but it's, can only be let out so much at a time. It's not likely to just open it up and let it go. It's controlled by law too. All of this was confirmed by the inspector, DMME inspector, at the hearing of the Notaway County Planning Commission. I'm telling you, once your for-sale water supply is drastically reduced and the town of Crewe can't fulfill its contractual agreements, the money coming in is reduced or stopped, but the one-hundred percent necessity for water is still there. What are you going to do? You want to tax all the taxpayers in Notaway County to bring us water? That ain't right. At the same time the town of Crewe is looking for water to sell, Luckstone is still over there making money. It's not Luck's problem, it's your problem. It should also be noted that adjoining property owners, where the property line runs at the center of Lazarida Creek, they also have legal rights to the use of that water. So this can reduce the flow and the amount of water going into Crystal Lake where it's treated and sold in the town of Crewe and now benefits from it. Some of those adjoining landlords might want to utilize some of that water. Like you say, you want it to get some dry. Instead of me feeding hay, I might want to irrigate my whole farm to give cows grass. They like it better to do hay. I'll say that most, if not all, the joining property owners, we've been excellent neighbors to the town of Crewe, Virginia. The evil that you're sending towards is totally unacceptable. I'm saying, don't shoot yourself in the foot and don't generate enemies you don't need. We can all work together. We can prosper. The town of Crewe can go places, but right now, I don't think we need a rock quarry because you're destroying the neighborhood. Y'all want all us outsiders to come on down, crew, shop, buy gas, can't go to grocery stores if you don't have one. You know, we can't afford like you. Y'all have left us out of the loop, and you don't like it, it ain't right. I think that this thing needs to be looked at from a human point of view, not dollar bills. Luckstone knows, they just bought a hundred thirty-nine acres of property right behind their quarry. And Burkeville, it's got some sand rock there. They need, they're trucking it down the road six days a week out of Burkeville, ain't they? They don't want to put that frail spur in there, but that's where it needs to go. Enlarge your Burkeville, ain't you? You don't mess up one town, don't mess up another. If you go, you can load that industrial park and there'll be plenty of good, clean jobs.
All right, Ms. Ball, I thank you very much. Are there others?
Father Oliver.
Yes, sir.
Father Paul Root.
And it destroys an entire neighborhood.[283.27][283.27](pause) The sale of water to Ottawa County Complex, Ottawa Schools, Piedmont Geriatric Hospital, Burkeville Prison, Sexual Behavior Center, some county residents, all-crew businesses, and all-crew town residents, that's a daily necessity for our survival. Water sales keeps the town of Crewe afloat. And you know it. And it's, as I stated, it is something that every human being must have every day to remain alive. I'm talking about life here, I'm not talking about dollar bills. These pictures will show, if you look at them, that there are numerous places in Lazarata Creek where the water is flowing over the solid rock, covered the entire width of Lazarata Creek. When and if Luckstone is allowed to extract mineral 100 feet from the property lines, the force from those explosions to break up the rock will probably cause the rocks moving across Lazarata Creek. The crack causes the water to be sucked into the cracks, and then it goes into the rock quarry, then it gets further contaminated, then they pump it up the hill to a holding pond and a settlement pond. And then later on, they let some of that water out, but it's, can only be let out so much of the time. It's not likely to open it up and let it go. It's controlled by law too. All of this was confirmed by the inspector, DMMI inspector, at the hearing at the Ottawa County Planning Commission. I'm telling you, once your for-sale water supply is drastically reduced, and the town of Crewe can't fulfill its contractual agreements, the money coming in is reduced or stopped, but the 100% necessity of water is still there. What are you gonna do? You want to tax, all the taxpayers in Ottawa County to bring us water? That ain't right. At the same time the town of Crewe is looking for water to sell, Luckstone is still over there making money. It's not Luck's problem, it's your problem. It should also be noted that the joint and property owners where the property line runs at the center of Lazarata Creek, they also have legal rights to the use of that water. So this can reduce the flow and the amount of water going into Crystal Lake, where it's treated and sold in the town of Crewe, and now benefits from it. Some of those adjoining landlords might want to utilize some of that water. Like you say, you want it to get dry. Instead of me feeding hay, I might want to irrigate my whole farm to give cows grass. They like it better to do hay. I'll say that most, if not all, the joint and property owners, we've been excellent neighbors to the town of Crewe, Virginia. The evil that you're sending towards is totally unacceptable. I'm saying, don't shoot yourself in the foot, and don't generate enemies you don't need. We can all work together, we can prosper, the town of Crewe can go places, but right now, I don't think we need a rock quarry because you're destroying the neighborhood. Y'all want all us outsiders to come on down to Crewe, shop, buy gas, can't go to grocery stores, you don't have one.[514.54][514.54](laughter) You know, we can't afford like that. Y'all have left us out of the loop, and you don't like it, it ain't right. I think that this thing needs to be looked at from a human point of light, not dollar bills.[534.04][534.04](applause) Mr. Luckstone knows, they just bought 139 acres of property right behind their quarry. And Burkeville, it's got some sand rock there. They need, they're trucking it down the road six days a week out of Burkeville, ain't they? They don't want to put that frail spur in there, but that's where it needs to go. In larger Burkeville, ain't you? Now messed up one town, don't mess up another.[566.16][566.16](laughter) If you own, if you own, you can look that industrial park, and there'll be plenty of good clean jobs.[575.29][575.29](applause)
All right, Mr. Ball, I thank you very much. Are there others?
Father Oliver.
Yes, sir.
Father Paul Root.
What was your name again, sir? I'm sorry.
Ronald Oliver. Yeah, uh, living there quite a while, all my life pretty much, my first council. Have, uh, these are just 200 and some names. All of them couldn't be here, there's more that wanted to be here. Unlike you, I did go around, talk to some business, some business people.
This is the copy I have of extra names.
They also agreed.
Just passing it around.
That they didn't like to propose rock quarry coming to town. But what could they do about it? you guys at them, they at your mercy, because they get water from. They have to boil some of the, some of the restaurants and things here, they still have to boil their water. Residents still gotta boil their water, but yet, Crewe claimed to have good water, and you're gonna put more stuff to the water?
No.
That ain't gonna work. No way you can filter out all that stuff. Okay, how much filtration you do? It's not, it's not gonna work. Look around. We got people in the town, we got people in the county, and you say it for yourself. You never had a bigger issue, never had this many people to attend such a meeting. So evidently, something is very, very important about this. Think about what we're about to do to this town. I mean, you got people in this town talking about diversity. You're talking about people getting together, doing what's right for mankind. Look at it, these people care about mankind. These people care about what we're gonna do for the future. They're not worried, they're not too concerned about dollar bills. That dollar bill, yes, we need it to survive. They care more about their neighbors.
Yes, amen.
I love my neighbors, and I bet you my neighbors can say the same thing about me.[727.12][727.12](applause) We have to do better as a town, as a community. We gotta do better, guys. So I guess.[743.12][743.12](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Francis Knight, and I live at 503 Custody. And I am 98 years old. And where that place is over there, where he ain't gonna do the rocker or whatever, that used to be a slaughterhouse down there, go all of it. And that cemetery. And what you, what you talking about, the water running under that 49th street, 49 Road Bridge? That have rocks down there because I done went from one end to the other. I have played on it. I have, my daddy and I, all of us, have sished in that little pond down there. And I just bought my home, not just bought it, but three years, four, four years to be in October. And I am not planning to lose my home. I have a sick son. He has epilepsy seizure. And I took him to the doctor, and they gave him operation on his brain, and they took 15 cells, burnt cells out of his head. And I'm gonna tell you people, I am not about to sign nothing for no love curry.[871.23][871.23](laughter) I came here to rest with my child, and I am, and if you wanna fight anywhere, I can call Washington DC or anywhere. I will get it. I will get it. I love my neighbors. That's what the Bible tells. And, and even you all that sitting around the table, you're supposed to look out for your own town too, but not all thinking about dollar bills, because dollar bills and things and that, but they're a little bit of high stuff. But let me tell you, I don't know, and you don't know either, how long you to live here. And I, right now, I care right now, so I can fight with y'all. Because I am gonna fight with my neighbors, because we all gonna fight together.[938.04][938.04](applause) That's for sure. Thank y'all, I love you.[948.12][948.12](laughter)
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. I appreciate the comment. Are there others?
My name is Ben Jones, and I got a few questions. I read in the paper that those of us who have concerns about this proposal have been dubbed alarmists. And I think after listening to this tonight, and reading what I've been reading in the internet, and looking up about this, I don't think we're alarmists, I think we're realists. And you opening the proverbial can of worms. A few years ago, our governor, Bob McDonald, was being tried in Richmond, and Judge Spencer looked at him. McDonald was the one whose wife was going to New York with Johnny Williams about getting little shopping trips and all. Ended up with a bunch of problems. Anyway, the judge looked at him, and he said, you let the serpent into your home, McDonald. And that's what I'm worried about. I think we're letting the serpent into our homes. Has the town of Crewe contacted any of these adjacent landowners in writing about this meeting being here tonight? I mean, the county normally when there's a condition will use to admit everybody who has a joint and land is contacted. Have y'all contacted anybody?
No.
No, it's public notice.
Well, I had to take them 22 months, when I asked, you know, y'all have been doing this 22 months.
We're gonna negotiate.
Six, seven people are gonna plot our choice, everybody in here. We have, our lives are being affected by what y'all decided to do seven, 22 months ago. We did not, seven people. I mean, are y'all all that, that much geniuses? Did y'all know what to do? We this little puppets? I mean, we don't get to say anything?
Welcome to run for council, Mr. Jones.
Was luck, excuse me?
Welcome to run for council.
No, I can't, I don't live in town. Unless y'all, y'all were gonna annex me once, when I wanted to keep the sewer off my property.
Here we go.
But that's another issue. We talk about DEQ is gonna look after the water that comes out of this plant. DEQ hasn't looked after anything, and they're the worst. I can't thank any government agency who does any poor jobs with DEQ, and I'm not the only one, and I've got a bunch of paperwork, I can show you, DEQ doesn't do such a great job. This department of mine and the minerals is about the same thing, from what I'm reading. I'm sitting here looking at a piece of paper here, talks about when they had the blasting problems up in Chantilly, which was a Luckstone quarry. And it said that they had big stone shower in the town. And it said, I don't know whether you George Field, but it says, what we're doing is not gonna damage it. How long George Field, corporate blasting technician said, we make sure that, we monitor all of our shots with seismographs, and make sure that they stay within legal limits. Well, the geologic DEQ is this part, Department of Mines and Minerals. So they're sitting there telling you to watch it. Now, I'm gonna give you a little statement from the lady who works for them. Tara Keaton, a spokeswoman for the Virginia Department of Mines and Minerals, and she said, and I quote, "We write them a notice of violation when there's a problem. Blasting is closed down on that site, then they have to submit a new blasting plan, which we approve before they can begin again. Luckstone calls their neighbors who signed up on the list to warn them about the schedule of blast." This is a quote I want you to remember. "If things fall off your shelf, then go ahead and give us a call. If they just shake a little bit, that's probably normal." And that's the lady who regulates these things, from the Department of Mines and Minerals. So this thing that we're not gonna hear anything, I sit in my house, the middle of 165 acres of pine trees all the way around it, and I'm in the middle of it, and I hear the little town cops over there, bang, 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 bang. I can tell you what, when they start blowing dynamite over there, it's gonna be a whole lot louder than them gunshots. You've got some big issues about your water. If we didn't have issues about water, our first meeting, we met down at the community center, Luckstone brought a hydrologist with them. If there's no reason, about water, why would they bring a hydrologist with? I mean, you know, if this, if you don't have any work, you know, your water's gonna all be great, well, why don't you bring somebody specializes in water? And all of this seems to be, when I look at it, it seems to have been done kind of slipshod, behind the scenes. And what it's all been about is money. And you sat there and told us that repeatedly. And I don't give the three minutes, but I'm gonna use it.
You got my back, three.[1234.16][1234.16](laughter)
See, anyway, I'll sit here and look at it. What Luckstone in this proposal, I see, says they're gonna be paying is $3.2 million. $3,200,000 for that property over there, is that correct? Fifty thousand a year, what they're doing?
It's three, 3% residual. Once they hit 3.2 million, we transfer the property. Up until that point, we still have it in our name.
All right, so 3.2 million, if you look at it, you're getting 50,000 a year, say, because we don't know what we gonna get, we don't know what they gonna produce, but we have guaranteed 50, 50,000 a year. Is anybody on that panel up at about at 50,000 into 3.2 million? That's 64 years.
The 50 is the minimum.
Well, that might be what you get. You can't plan on the maximum. I mean, I don't think we got 224 restaurant employees in Crewe either, but, I mean, I'll go along with that. So anyway, I started thinking, I said, well, you know, our industrial park, we're gonna lose it. So I took the liberty, Mrs. Cleaver, as Eddie Haskell would say, of looking around for some other opportunities that the town of Crewe might use to make money. And then I went around and talked to some of the boys and girls, and ladies and gentlemen who have property over here to make sure that would suit them. Well, how about Crewe, Virginia being a leader once? I'm almost 60 years old. What we've always done is follow it. We always go, well, let's go see what so-and-so's doing, how do they do their garbage? What kind of trash truck do they have? Why don't we be the leader? Here's a proposal right here from a solar company, that'll come over onto your industrial park, put 150 acres of solar cells over there. Pay you considerably more money than what you gonna get from Luckstone, by contract. I mean, this will be upfront. And I might also include that every five years, you get a 1% increase. They bump their price up 1%. I didn't see any of that, 50,000 every year. So if we went by this, at year 40, we would be looking at $3,530,000. We wouldn't have to worry about anybody having any pollution in the creek or water that we drank. The same water that a few years ago, another town council decided we needed a Tyson poultry plant here, and we were gonna gut poultry, and then scrub that water up, put it back in Lazarata Creek. I said, this is just absolutely incredible. So if you want to make money, I've got somebody to make money that everybody in this room is agreeable with. It's the same amount of money, and it's clean. And you're gonna have people, I can see it now, hey, let's go to Crewe, I wanna go there and build a new house. They got a rock quarry? Oh, yeah, boy, I can hardly wait. I wanna build a house there, you know? Every one of you, Will Wilson's house, I remember when it was brick veneer. Don't think that brick veneers will stay on your house jack. I can tell you, it's gonna come loose. I've worked around houses all my life. I'm almost 60 years old. When you make these things, houses shake, you have property damage. You damage water, you change the hydrology. That's why a big company like Luckstone, one of their big people, I saw in the paper the other day, 3.5 million, Charles B. Luck III sold his house, 3 and 1/2 million. No, no, I just have 3 and 1/2 million dollar houses. We just got our regular old house, and it's our biggest asset, and we'd like to have some water to drink. And we've lived here, and we bought and paid, I ran the town's oldest business till I pretty much got chased out of town because I didn't want to sue them anymore. But anyway, what we need to do is we need to look at what people are looking at.
That's right.
Three, uh, one more minute?
Appreciate your comments.
I mean, I think that's fine, I was close on, because, I mean, it's kind of the way it's all going. Y'all get 30, and we get 3.
Is the proposal, is the proposal?
Yeah, I got a proposal.
Is that for us?
No.
Okay.
Because I don't think y'all are gonna wanna do it. I think what we're doing here is blowing steam, and I think it's really sad. And it's seven people who are gonna shark the rumination of Crewe. Might as well go on and put the last nail in the coffin. If y'all put this thing in here, it's over. Because nobody's gonna wanna come here and build a house.
All right, Mr. Jones, appreciate the comments. Are there others? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Mindy Moore, 1199 CCC Road. Five years ago, I was a single mom. I took all the money I had, and I built the house. Me and my son lived there. I have now been married, have stopped, son. I was told at one of these meetings before, that we were literally 500 feet away from where they're gonna load the rail. Where I lay my head, they're gonna load rail cars for hours and hours. I was told they will be blasting 1,500 feet from where I sleep. Which, as you say, they're gonna blast during the day, once every two weeks, once every week maybe. Guess what? My husband's a deputy. He works night shift. He sleeps during the day. I would like him to have his sleep, because he carries a gun, he protects the citizens of Dinwiddie County. I understand Luckstone's point. I've addressed some concerns with them, and they've talked with me about email. We've communicated, they've actually done a study on my property. I'm waiting on the results of that. But I was told is, I am one of the closest houses to this entire operation. Also, my husband has a partner. He has a canine dog that lives in our backyard. I wanna know what the results of all of this is gonna have on him. That dog needs his hearing and his eyesight to operate, to save my husband in an emergency situation. Luckstone nor the town has been able to give me that answer yet. I don't know if that's a dog study, I don't know who needs to give me that answer. That dog lives in our backyard, where they're gonna be dropping rock during the day, also when the dog needs to sleep, because he works night shift as well. My other concern is, I didn't know about this meeting until tonight. I had to find a ride for my kids to go to Boy Scouts so I can attend this meeting. You say it's public notice? Maybe that is our fault, it's public notice. But guess what? There's a lot of people in our road that's in their 80s and 90s, they don't know what public notice even is. They don't even know a rock quarry's coming, nor do they even have a vehicle to drive up here to set any of these meetings. I think you all need to do a better job on notice. I also think Luckstone needs to do a better job on notice. This whole housing survey, first time I heard that. Which, I wouldn't take it, because it's gonna be their independent person doing it. That's not really gonna benefit us, and we all know that. So I just wanted y'all to know my concerns, as supposedly one of the closest people to the property. My husband works four to five days at night, sorry, at night. So he sleeps four to five days during the day. So until someone can give me those answers, I'm kind of holding my hands up, and I'm not gonna support Luckstone until then.[1663.04][1663.04](applause)
Yes, ma'am, I thank you. Are there, yes?
I want to say that Mr. Jones has looked into the, what is it, the solar energy thing, and Dominion says that they need, if they did that, they would need a substation right close, and there is a substation just across from the industrial farm. So that's something y'all could think and pray about.
Perfect location. Very.
Thank you, Peggy. Are there others? Yes, sir.
I think this is a done deal. I got feelings for this. Mr. Mayor, y'all, y'all look around. It's a lot of folks here, I guess, at Rockaway. And you said something about a recreation for the rock quarry and everything?
100 years down the road.
Has the Burkeville Rock Quarry got a recreation there?[1734.87][1734.87](laughter) Still up there. There's a rock quarry that used to be, right here on 360. There's no recreation there.
That's on private land, I think.
Still a rock quarry, isn't it? Another thing, money. That's the root of all evil, isn't it? And you think this money is why I'm gonna help Crewe when it becomes a ghost town?
Nobody wants to live here.
No. You get somebody to come here and says, Crewe has got a rock quarry down here. You think somebody's gonna move here?
No.
We can't even get a grocery store here.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Are there others?
What does the current town council think of all this? If the old one's the one who negotiated all this, what does the current council...
We have a letter from Ms. Bowen in support. Uh, Mr. Bradley has not addressed to me. Yes, sir.
Alright.
Actually, it's his meeting, I'm just sitting there.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Nice to meet y'all. I am the newest, uh, greenhorn on this panel. I am used to public speaking, because I am one of these preacher in this town. I pastor Calvary Church, right there, along this line, where everybody's talking. Crewe Baptists, Levino's, Calvary Baptists, that's us. We have the same fears as everybody else in this room. And granted, some of these things that I've heard, the first time I've heard of them, mainly because of my job, I work two jobs. I pastor, a loving group of people, I've been there five years. I work a part-time job, which I keep none of the money for, it goes all back into the church. So I know what it means to work hard and not have anything with it. I know what it's like to live in Crewe. I was elected by the people. And I stand here with you and I understand you. How many of you, you can say that you've been on hard times over the last twenty years? My whole life has been hard times. I grew up on a dirt road. I had such a hard time growing up. I didn't have the chance to buy new clothes or anything else like that. But I learned something from my daddy. And when the times get tough, you do whatever it takes to make it right. You work hard. Granted, I feel for your husband, I really do. It's one of the things I didn't know about beforehand. And I hope, and I know that these men over here are working really hard to get you an answer. I don't know how, we laugh. But I don't know how many of y'all saw them scurrying when they had these things. They're working to get you answers. I promise you this, as a man who scurries himself to get answers to people, when it comes about the Bible, when it comes about their work, you're working hard. This is us as a town, understanding that it's difficult. And yes, we do hear your problems, and yes, we wanna answer them. But we also understand that this is one of these moments that we have to make it a little bit easier on everybody else. How? I don't know about you, but we say, we see that we don't have a grocery store, I get that. One of the biggest things that I've been wanting, and I've talked with people on my own personal time, ask any one of these council members. I have been to these council meetings way before I was even on this board. And I've been begging grocery stores to come here. And we're gonna work on that, and we're gonna get one. But we say that because we want jobs here. And we want things that'll come here, and more businesses will tack on one upon the other. Listen, if it's just thirty jobs or a hundred and fifty jobs, then it's worth it, in my opinion, that my son has the possibility to have an outstanding job, and it doesn't have to go to Farmville, myself, to work. I'm for it. Granted, granted. One second, one last time, I'll try my best, can I answer questions? One time. Yes, sir.
Do you think Luckstone's gonna help us get a grocery store here?
Not directly. Now, listen, 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 before you laugh me down, hear me out. Who's gonna run and operate a grocery store? It has to be an individual. It's not gonna be Luckstone, but once a business comes in, and maybe one of these people that they hire with a good-paying job will be able to save his money and to make a business.
I'm thinking like this, if we have to go to Farmville, we have to go to Blackstone, or we have to go to Millie or Richmond, just to buy grocery, that's taking revenue out of Crewe. And the same thing with, um, department stores. If I go school shopping, I gotta go to, um, Blackstone, I gotta go to Farmville, I have to go to Richmond, bypass Millie on this one, you know, to shop. These are the things that the council should be looking at, not so much for a rock quarry that's gonna cause harm, but give us what we really need to keep revenue.
Thank you for letting me speak.
You're a preacher too. That's right.
Thank you for letting me speak, I'm having my three minutes, just like everybody else.
Does anybody have a name of someone whose well or foundation has been damaged in Burkeville? I'd love to reach out to them.
They didn't come.
They didn't come.
I'm just wondering, have there been any complaints from individuals that live near the Burkeville quarry that have had their well damaged or their foundation...
They complain about boiling their water, they complain about...
They're on well water.
Yeah, but they're, they're on full wells of water.
Just, that's just, that's my question. If somebody can get some information to me of someone who's had some problems with their foundation cracking or their well being damaged from the quarry in Burkeville, I'd like to know about it.
I'm, I ain't gonna say about Burkeville, but I know, we had an earthquake in Crewe two years back. That's when, when the garment factory was still open. And it, it, I got a crack in my wall from that. So, I mean, the blasting would be to, almost equivalent to the same thing.
I don't agree, ma'am.
We sit on the rock itself, and the rock will shift.
Yeah.
Y'all don't mind, let's, uh, we still have some commentary, let's, uh... The floor is still open for comment, uh, Mr. Al.
Would the panel, would, would, would the, would planning committee consider what Ben has found? To investigate it, take a look at it? And, and, and see what kind of offer that would make for us today? At least consider looking into it.
Looking at other options for the industrial park. Look at other options for the industrial park. Why does that have to be a quarry? Have you solicited any other kind of business over there? It's been over there for years, and, you know, you've got a couple of businesses in there. What other businesses have you solicited for the, the industrial park? At least look at this proposal, this man's card is on here, he's willing to come talk to you and the council about this. And to, to tell you what, what needs to be done, he's making, bringing way more money into the community. And when, when twenty years or thirty years, when maybe they move out and they're not in the solar business anymore, you've still got your industrial park, just like it was when they came. You don't have a big hole in the ground.
Mrs. Jones, Ben needs to present that to town council, if you don't mind.
Well, I think they're gonna vote tonight, why, or should he do it?
Then, uh, we'll, there's some comments on the quarry right now, if you don't mind, okay? Are there other comments?
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It seems like this is a done deal. I don't know how this process works, but it seems like basically this is a done deal, and I just, I wanna know. I'm gonna wanna know if I have a rock quarry in my backyard.
Well, it was sold, but didn't y'all sell it? Did, everything took place on the twenty eighth of April. Y'all, y'all voted...
The town of Crewe voted to sell, yes.
So it's a done deal, right?
It's a done deal.
This is, this is primarily for the conditional use permit.
I don't know what that means.
Say it again.
Repeat that again, if you don't mind, just... This is for the conditional use permit, basically allowing them to do what they need to do based on the contract that we've got, under the conditions that we've stipulated. In other words, the, the, uh... The mining between nine thirty and five, for example, when they have to do, do the rock implosions. The cemetery piece, the reimbursement of folks that might have issues. You know, if their well goes dry or they have a foundation issue. All of that is part of the conditions. This is a conditional use permit, basically for comment on those conditions.
So, so, excuse me, sir, you, you're only concerned, uh, the people that work from nine to five? You, you have no consideration for the ship workers? Or we don't have any ship workers around, everybody, you're nine to five? So, so, we haven't taken them into consideration. And what about the fact of, uh, all these things that would be, be done after the effect? What about, what about the things that be done before the effect of something happening? You just going to the people and gonna say, well, how do we know that it wasn't already there?
The surveys, the surveys could not take place until this process is finished, until the county process is finished, until the Virginia Department of Mine, Minerals, and Energy process is finished. Once those processes have been finished, then Luck will reach out to everybody within that, that twenty-five hundred foot, half mile radius, so they can inspect the wells and inspect foundations.
And my last, my, uh, my, my last question, on this water settlement? Because I, I, like I said, I worked in a power plant, and we had water and bad settling ponds, alright, which was dead away with, because of water, chemicals and things leaking into the ground. Uh, how are we gonna handle those issues? Are those water gonna be placed in some type of container, is it gonna be checked before it's let back into our creeks?
Mr. Patterson, I think, uh, a lot of issues brought up. I think, uh, probably Luckstone would like to answer some of these.
Okay.
As they answer some of our questions that y'all may have. So at this time, uh, there's no more comments, I would like Luckstone to answer some of the questions you've heard.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it, I appreciate it. And, um, I'll start, just for my recency syndrome. Um, the, with respect to the water, that is, we use water as part of our process. As you saw in the presentation, we use it for dust suppression, to keep, keep dust down on the site. All that water, the, the plant is, you know, the, the whole site is designed to drain all that water back into the pit. The water is then treated through a series of ponds, and then it's discharged from that, from the last pond, back into the creek.
How you treat it?
How you treat it?
It, it goes through, it, it's not treated with chemicals, it's treated, it's basically, it's just settlement, it's settlement.
Settlement basis.
Yeah, exactly, settlement basis.
So it's not treated, it's settled?
We don't, we don't use any, we don't use any chemicals in our, we don't use any chemicals in our process, so there's no, there's no chemicals to treat. The, um, with respect to the, the monitoring of that discharge, we have to submit quarterly reports to DEQ. The DEQ also, before we start the discharge, DEQ issues a Virginia Pollution Elimination...
VPDES, Virginia Pollution Discharge Elimination System. I'm very familiar with that.
That process, um, it's monitored. Uh, with respect to, there've been a, a number of questions about the, um, potential water seepage into the, into the quarry, um, because of, because of blasting. Um, and, uh, Mr. Jones, I believe, mentioned that we, we brought a hydrogeologist to the last meeting. We also brought one to this meeting. Um, and I'd be happy for, for Mike to address, uh, Mike Malloy is with ECS, Environmental Consulting Services. Um, so this, the, the study that Mr. Malloy is gonna reference has to be submitted to DMMe, has to be reviewed, has to be approved prior to the, to our operations beginning. So they will review, they will review the report and ensure that, you know, the, the study that he's gonna, he's gonna reference is accurate, and, and there won't be, you know, that there's no issues related to it. So, Mike, you wanna talk briefly about the, how the study works and what, what you, what you found so far?
Absolutely. Um, yeah, I'm Mike Malloy, uh, hydrogeologist with ECS in Atlantic. What myself and, and our team at ECS have done is we performed a hydrogeologic assessment of the site. Um, involved a broad literature review, installation of test-monitor wells. Uh, we did pump testing of those wells, uh, monitoring observation wells during the testing. Um, we used data collected from the pump testing, um, and from published literature to develop a model with predictive simulations. And what we were tasked to do was look for potential impact to surface water and groundwater. And one of the key findings, uh, was the surface water, uh, we basically predicted the amount of water over time that would be discharged out of the pit. That amount of water that would be discharged out of the pit far exceeds any seepage that would be expected from Lazarus River Creek, um, which would make it available for replenishing the stream if it needed to be. Regarding groundwater impact, um, as far as looking out from the pit, uh, the predictive simulations we did drawdown reduced greatly as we got outside the pit. Um, in the area itself, off-site impact was maximized right around the boundary of the pit, which we would expect, uh, and then basically went up steeply from that. Um, the findings of our report include conclusions that state a monitoring plan is recommended along with contingency plans. Should any, uh, trends, uh, point towards impact, we would expect those to be slow if there's impact. The groundwater monitoring program would include wellsite locations around the site perimeter. Things happen slowly in a quarry typically. Going down, they excavate slowly over time. The water wells are monitored typically at least quarterly, um, looking for trends, seasonal trends, yearly trends. And if there is an impact trend noticed, we can give it the spotlight attention and, and try to, uh, keep track of that. Again, a contingency plan would also be, uh, put together in the event there ever was any mitigation or any...
Why are these called settling ponds?
Why are they called settling ponds? It's when we, you know, when there, essentially, there's, there's dirt or, or showing us it's in the water when, when we, when we, you know, use our dust suppression, uh, there's, you know, there's dirt in the water, just like any other runoff from, uh, from a site. All that water, you know, we, we don't wanna, we don't discharge that water off the site until it's been through that process. So the process is, is settling the heavier, the heavier material, the dirt, the stone dust, out of the water. So the water that gets discharged is clean, there's nothing in it.
You can guarantee that there's nothing in it? No, 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 no. Yes or no? You can guarantee that there's nothing in it?
What does nothing mean? Yeah, what is nothing?
Oh, oh, oh.
Nothing mean?
Well, I mean, there's something...
That means that it was the same as it was taken out of Lazarus River Creek. That's what nothing means.
Yes, yes.
You can guarantee that?
Yes, so I'll give you an example, earlier.
He billed you out to, but, cause I don't believe it, cause he, he was a yes or no answer. It was something...
Then, then yes, there you go.
Yeah, okay. Took you a long time to get to yes.
I just wanted to get, I wanted to get, can I give you, can I give you an example?
Don't, you might insult these people's intelligence, but don't insult mine.
I'm not insulting you.
Yes, you are. Because you're trying to tell me that you can extort take the water after you've been mining, and you can take that water and pump it back into the water, that all my school kids, cause I'm on the school board, has to drink, and it's gonna be okay. And sure, you might test it every quarter, but what happens if something happens after he's already tested? And it's gone down there to the plant?
Mr. Patterson, the, the water is treated before the high school gets it anyway. What they're saying is that the water, the water that goes in the Lazarus River Creek will meet DEQ standard.
You can't treat your water fast enough when my brother puts water on the football field. A couple of years ago, Mr. Wilson will remember, there was a gentleman on six oh seven that would pump water out of the creek and pump it up the hill using a tractor as a pump into his pond. And every time he do that, he hurt crews drinking water, they didn't have enough water. Mr. Wilson and I talked about it back then when he was coaching football along with myself. So what are you gonna do when they disrupt a water source for Crewe?
I don't think they're gonna disrupt the water source.
You don't think?
Nope. My, based on what...
But you can't, but you can't make that assumption.
You can't make the assumption that it will. You can't make the assumption that it will.
Let me pose this question to you. If I told you I'm gonna take some dirty water that I just caught off the roof, and I'm gonna put it in a bottle, and I'm gonna hold it until it settles, and then I'm gonna pour it in your drinking water, would you let me?
Yeah.
You would? This is no brainer, this is no brainer. But what I wanna do is I wanna take a look, I wanna take a picture with the council before we leave, because I wanna see the people that created this Flint, Michigan, in Crewe. Cause that's what you're doing. That's exactly what you're doing. You, you've already said, we, we talked down at the last meeting. You're about dollars. You're here to sell something to the county, even if it's no good, because it's about dollars on your end. So all you're thinking about is money. You don't live here, you don't live near it. And I'm sure Mr. Knight wouldn't let me come down there and blast in the bottom of a little him. If I wanted to take that little empty lot down in there and start blasting rock down there, he wouldn't have it. None would have it. It's common sense.
Yes.
Don't, don't try to sell me something. You're here to do a job, and I can respect that. You're here to sell them a rock quarry, even though you know when you get in your vehicle and you leave and go back to your town, you know it's not good for the town of Crewe.
Yeah, that's true.
It makes dollars to you, so it makes sense.
Yeah, I, I just, your, your statement isn't accurate, but when I leave here, then I'm gonna know it's not good for the town of Crewe. Cause I honestly believe that it is good for the town of Crewe. We operate, we operate nineteen quarries.
Particle is already dried up, Crewe's gonna end up the same way.
What he's saying, what he's saying is, the smaller the sand is gonna hurt the water, why would you wanna take that, James?
So, so again.
Now you say, can you say well, you say well?
Let's, uh, let's get back on track, if y'all don't mind, this, uh.
If, if you don't, if you don't want to.
Luckstone had the floor a lot, uh.
I do wanna address the question of the water. Because it was, yeah, I think it's a valid, it's a valid question. And, so what, what we, what we've done is we went and we tested, um, I don't have the date directly, but I could have to look at it, but within the last three weeks, we tested the water in Lazaretta Creek. And we compared it to the results of our discharge from Burkeville over the last four years. And the measurement levels in the, in the town of, in Lazaretta Creek are consistent with the discharge levels that we put out at Burkeville. And that's something that's monitored quarterly, that's the report that goes to DEQ. So that's.
Excuse me, what gives me this order that, that monitoring that, that, that queue affecting everybody? I, I come out of a power plant and we have to monitor these things, I'm boiling daily, we monitor these things hour. And, and what I wanna.
There's a big difference between.
Well, I mean, you're blasting, you, what, what are you blasting with? What, what are you monitoring?
Joe, I'd like to. Joe, if we can clarify, yeah, we do monitor it daily. All you're looking, all the water gets, gets dirty.
Somebody's laughing.
We do, I, I'll clarify. We visually monitor it daily, multiple times a day. We take actual samples and send them to the lab on a quarterly basis. There are no chemicals in our water. When you look at it, if it's brown, it's dirty, if it's clear, it's clear. If it's, if it's got suspended solids in it, dirt, you don't pump it, you don't turn your pumps on. Till that, till that dirt settles out of the water, you cut your pumps on, then you discharge. And so that's what I meant to clarify, I didn't mean to be confusing, but we take quarterly lab results, send them to the lab. We monitor it every day, the managers come in, they're looking at the, the water quality.
Why? Why does Luckstone water in Burkeville look like Mountain Dew? A bad batch of Mountain Dew, why does it look like that? Holding ponds, all they look, all is yellow, green is yellow.
It's actually a clean green, I believe, on the bottom of the pit.
But they don't, do they drink it?
Do we drink the pit water?
Do they drink, do they drink it?
Not, no, not at all.
The Burke, Burkeville water comes from wells, the, the water they.
I'm talking about the water in the holding pond, they gotta be all through the water. I asked them, do they drink it, they said, no, they cannot drink it, they only use it on the yard and wash the water. Well, you're talking about what's, what's the quality?
Once you put it in the, in the, in the, in the lake, I mean, and, um, Lazaretta Creek, we'll be drinking it. Same thing.
So what's the difference?
It's gonna be treated.
It's all, it's okay.
Why is Nottaway County Schools sending their water to be tested periodically from, for private testing? If the water is so clean and y'all associate our water is okay, then our children are drinking it.
That's a question for the school board, ma'am, not, not us.
It must be good, because I have a child that's been in Nottaway County Public Schools since pre-K. Nothing wrong with the kid. Graduating with honors.
The gentleman, the gentleman did ask a question about, about blasting, this process. So would like, we could have Brian Smith, who's our corporate blasting manager, just describe the process, the materials that we use. Also the difference between a blast and an earthquake.
I'm, I'm Brian Smith.
This, uh, this, pay attention, please. Don't mind.
Now, I'll start by addressing the earthquake comments. Um, blasting is very different from an earthquake, very different frequency of the waves going through the ground. Much like ripples in a pond, the frequency of an earthquake is like big, slow ripples. Blasting has much smaller, more frequent ripples. If you've ever been in a, in a small boat, you can relate to that. Big wave, long distance between the waves, your boat's gonna rock a lot more than if you're on a, in a boat and you got a lot of waves that are really close together. That makes some sense? Earthquake frequency is very, very low, very what we do.
I can ask y'all a question. If y'all come out here and start digging and mess up our well, her well, her well, her, and, and knowing that y'all the co-sir, are y'all gonna fix all our well?
Yes, ma'am.
No, no, all that money. No, you won't, be honest.
It's a condition, I'm, I'm.
You're asking the question, it's answering, you're saying no.
You asked me a question, I provided you, you can answer.
Yeah, but I'm telling you, and your answer, you won't do. And, and you getting paid for to get the lawyer, so, no. Y'all know y'all not doing us right. You're not doing us right. And don't none of y'all live here, how many of y'all live here in Crewe? Right? Y'all living in town of Crewe?
Yes, yes.
Ask it go, uh, affect y'all water like it go affect us? It go affect y'all house like it go affect us?
I drink water.
Y'all don't drink, I know people living in Crewe that got some dirty nasty water and do not drink it.
I have no problem with it.
Huh?
I have no problem with it.
You don't?
No, I don't.
When you keep on drinking and you find, I, I had to come to my house and get my house. But if y'all be getting messed up the well today, where you think they going to? The water is nasty here in Crewe. I was talking to a man, now today his, his bad from his stuff, the, the bad from his rusted, break. They can't have a use it.
I reached eighty-eight by drinking the water.
You what?
I reached eighty-eight by drinking the water.
Oh, God, help me to get eighty-eight. I'm out of water, God help, God help me get there. And I hope he help me to get eighty-eight and more.
Y'all interested in going back to the blasting?
Yeah.
I'll explain just briefly, the materials we use in our blasting is primarily ammonia nitrate. It's like a concentrated version of fertilizer, is ammonia, ammonia nitrate. When we use it, we effectively, when, when something explodes, we're really burning it quickly. So we're taking all of that material and we're initiating it where it burns very rapidly. So there's nothing left but gas that use, that works on the rock. So the gas expands, pushes the rock, which is what breaks the rock. It's ammonia nitrate, there's no dynamite, we haven't used dynamite in forty, fifty years.
Type of blast cap, you, non-electroelectric? Type of blast cap?
We use both non-electric and electronic, we don't use any electric blasting caps. So they can't be, it cannot be set off from a radio, some of those things you may have seen on construction jobs, the electronic.
Military, I know.
The electronic caps that we use now have to be set off effectively with a, with a little, small computer system. And they allow us to time the blast to within, uh, one millisecond from another hole. So that every hole that goes off, you might see a big shot, but it's really every hole is a separate shot in the way. And that keeps the vibrations down. And we've learned over the last ten years using science and computers that we can time each hole so that it helps cancel the vibration coming to your house by the vibration from the next hole. It's really pretty cool stuff.
True.
By, by being able to time each hole within one millisecond of each other, we can look at how fast the wave from this hole shooting propagates and this hole shooting, so that the waves run into each other and help cancel each other out before they reach your structure. By doing that, we found we can cut our readings in half from what they were at your house site, ma'am, than when we weren't doing that. Huge difference, even though the readings before that were maybe ten percent of what the state allows, we can reduce it even more. There's a lot of science we're using now, computers, computer modeling, uh, very accurate equipment. And we're learning all the time, I can honestly say we're a lot better today than we were five years ago. We're light years ahead of where we were thirty years ago in the blasting science.
Can you guarantee that, that we won't feel it, effects here in Crewe from the blasting?
I cannot guarantee you won't feel it. Then on where you live, you're gonna feel something. But I will say you also feel your kids running down the hall upstairs too.
That's true, but are, are there gonna monitor, these monitors that you're setting out? Are there gonna be reason captured on these monitors before you start your blasting? So once you start your blasting and these numbers start coming up, you'll know where you are? Rather than tell these people that, well, we only, we only have these type of monitors here. And if you're all broke, or what, what, or they might have to pay somebody to go to court and to fight you all, because you all only had numbers prior to you all blasting and not prior to this whole operation being set up. Are you all gonna do any monitoring prior to that?
We can. Uh, we'll set up size of the rest, I'm not sure.
You say you can?
We can, we can do that.
And, and, are, are, are you all have this as part of your operation already?
So, let me just clarify, let me clarify one thing, cause it has come up a couple of times regarding the process. So, we're here tonight to ask the town crew for approval for our use. There was a, there was a previous public hearing held about the contract, whether the two, whether the town was gonna be willing to sell the land.
Okay.
So they, they've held that public hearing. This public hearing is to discuss the use, whether, whether a rock quarry, we need to get a conditional use permit. So whether the, that permit is, is permitted, whether the county or, excuse me, the town will permit that. We need the same from, from Nottaway County for the plant portion. Most of the pit is in the town of Crewe, most of the plant is in Nottaway County. Once those approvals are in place, we then have to make application to the Department of Mines, Minerals and Energy. And they're gonna review the application, it's a very technical review. So they're gonna, they're gonna be looking at, you know, all the things that Mike was discussing about, about the, um, any potential water impact, making sure that that's, that's not, that's not gonna be an issue. Um, they look at a number of other things, including, you know, including blasting plans. Um, they, they ask for the, the pre-blast surveys that, that we discussed, um, earlier in that. So just for clarification on that, the pre-blast survey, we're, we're gonna all, you know, we will contact anybody after we receive that DMF from an approval. I just wanna make sure that people understand that we're not gonna contact anybody before we have approval. Because if we don't get approval, then why would we have contacted you? So the, we're gonna contact people after we get approval, that'll be people within twenty-five hundred feet, so half a mile. If anyone else wishes to have us do a pre-blast survey that's outside of that twenty-five hundred feet, we'll put a list out here tonight. Um, we can, we will also work with, with the town of Crewe to have a, have a, um, a list that could be available to the public. So that if anybody else outside of that twenty-five hundred feet that we don't contact directly wants a pre-blast survey, we'll do it. So what that does is it establishes the condition of the home prior to our operations, just like you're saying. We can also, if, you know, if it's the desire and the, and the, the council wanted to ask at that as a condition, we could also do, we could do seismograph monitoring prior to our operations to show what vibration levels are different areas in the town where we may, um, set seismographs in the future. Cause we want, you, you want it to be in the same place as it is, it's gonna be when we blast, so that you're comparing apples to apples.
Um, when we do that, we will get DMV's opinion where to put those seismographs. So if they feel that we're properly representing, uh, the impact on the community. Typically what we wanna do is we'll look at where we're gonna start the pit. We're gonna try to find, we're gonna find the closest non-company, um, location for our seismograph. Cause we wanna see the worst reading we're gonna get. We don't wanna find the best reading. We want the, we want the strongest reading, so we're gonna put it at the closest house. This is more, if that's your house, we're gonna come to you and ask you.
There's been a sound study already done at my house.
We can put it on your property, because you are close. We're gonna want the closest property to monitor. And we may go in a couple of different directions, we may do the closest property in this direction and the closest property in that direction, even though it might be a little further away. We wanna know, we really wanna know, and that helps us improve. So when we see the readings, we can work with our, um, blasting consultants to try to make it better. Whatever it is, I can tell you that our readings are good, our readings are, are well below the state standards. But we're gonna work to make them better as we move forward and we learn how the rock shoots and learn how your house, what your house is feeling, we're gonna work to make it better.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I hear what you're saying, I'm trying to understand it all, but what if you're in the guidelines, all these studies look perfect, but y'all wake my husband up every time you blast? He's gonna carry a gun at night to protect himself, he can't be woken up. So what if he does wake up, what are y'all gonna do? Or are we just out of luck?
We, we want you, if that happens, Miss Moore, we want you to contact us.
But I mean, I guess how, is there a possibility to fix it? Obviously, once y'all are there and blasting, it's not gonna stop.
Yeah, I can, I can't promise what we will do, but I can say we want, we wanna know and we will try to work with you to make it better.
And Brian, and Brian, just to clarify, that the blasting event lasts less than a second? And that, and that happens at a, at our busiest quarries, two to three times a week.
At the duration of, the longest blast is less than a second?
Correct, it's, it's, it's milliseconds, it doesn't take time. We're, we're expecting that this location will last once, maybe once a week, you know, twice every ten days.
I mean, and I'm not being picky, but my kids aren't in, you, you wake him up in the middle of the night, that night he goes to work and he has to run through the woods with someone with a gun after it. He can't have lack of sleep because of something that, we built a house and we had no option coming in our backyard. We can't afford to move, I, that house is our house for life.
Yeah, the other, the other thing that, the other thing that we'll, we'll be doing, and I'm, I need to look exactly where, where your property is, we'll also, we're gonna be play, putting up burns, so.
I understand that and I have some concern about that, cause if you build a burn, I'm assuming it's on Luckstone's property, then you're just gonna reflect the train noise all in my backyard as well. Cause then the train noise can't go that way, it can only come one way. So I mean, I, I get that you're saying all these things and I'm not being negative towards Luckstone, but I have valid questions and I wish I could get some answers. And I wish twenty-two months ago we knew it was happening and we could have some answers.
We'd be, we'd be happy.
And y'all had, y'all had done a sound study on our property, I've emailed and I've got answers from y'all, so I'm not being negative, but I have some valid concerns, I just wish somebody would pay attention other than dollar signs and what the town wants to do. You know, we are the citizens.
Yeah.
So it just feels like we're kinda not being heard and that they sit up here and say that they're doing it for us, but several of them are shaking their heads and making comments while we talk.
Yeah.
Not all of them, there are a few, and I, I think that's disrespectful. They're supposed to listen to us, they don't have to like what we say.
That's right.
Nobody has to like what we say, but at least give us the respect.
That's right.
You know, I have some valid concerns, I'm sleeping five hundred feet away from where the rail cars normally is. You know, and it might be quiet and it might not wake him up, but it might. So we just have some car concerns. And I appreciate that Luckstone is answering me, I have communicated with them, so I'm not negative in that regard.
We, we appreciate your concerns, because you're right, you're close, we understand your husband's situation. We're gonna, all I can say is we're gonna try to work with you. Does anyone else have any questions about blasting before we move on to another topic?
Yes, sir.
I actually got a question about the blasting caps.
Okay.
You said that the, the explosion is a solid turning to a gas, is there any residual, residual chemicals left over that you worry about that flowing into the runoff or your seismograph?
No, we, uh, you know, in the, in the, in my hi, thirty-eight year history of Luckstone, we've seen a few things in some water samples we thought might have been a little trace from some of our blasting. But typically, no, cause we're working hard to, we, we designed it so that it burns all that material, it burns it all into the gas, so that there's nothing left.
In terms of, uh, storage of the explosives and stuff, will you guys be reaching out to the local fire departments, emergency services to make sure they got safety plans and whatnot in case anything got to be a problem?
We'll, we'll communicate, if, if we store explosives on the site, we'll communicate with the fire marshal's office, make the fire marshal aware. We permit that because we're mining, we don't permit it through the fire marshal's office, we permit it with, through, directly through ATF. ATF supervises our explosive storage. But we do directly communicate with the local fire marshal to make them aware of where, how much, they have all the information about it. Welcome to come in and visit us and see what we're doing.
I was gonna add, Brian, we make it a habit of inviting the local fire departments in to, to the sites to, to their aware of what, what's going on, so.
We just had a visit in Loudoun County where we had, I think it was like eight members of the Loudoun County Fire Marshal's Office, the whole fire marshal team of Loudoun County came to the site.
And you say you're inviting people in, are there anybody, are there public, are hours of jail, walk in? Or everything has to be announced, so we can get plans in order?
That's a great question. We don't, we don't want anyone from the general public just walking in. We don't, we don't want anyone from the general public just walking in. This might sound bad, but you don't know what the hazards might be. You might not be looking for haul trucks traveling. You might, you know, we, we do not want anyone to get hurt on that property. We want people to be escorted where we can advise you of any safety hazards. However, if you wanna come, you can call our local manager. You can call myself. You can call Matt. And we'll be glad to arrange a tour for you. We love people to come see our sites.
It's not like OSHA. It's not like OSHA. You just can show up.
So, we're, so we're, we're regulated by MSHA, which is the Mine Safety Administration, Mine, Bird, and Ocean. They do show up unannounced, twice a year, and do a, a safety inspection. They're usually there for a week at a time. They go through everything with a fine tooth comb to make sure that, that there aren't violations.
They have lots of regulations around visitors and any visitor being properly trained and communicated with and escorted, signing in, signing out. There's a whole lot of regulations that are good regulations that we want to adhere to around visitors and how we escort people. But if y'all wanna tour, you know, whether it's now at our Burkeville site or in the future when we start operating, we will welcome you.
You was talking about when you blast, when you blast, you said the gas, it burns and then goes up. It goes up with the dust. With the dust and then it disperses the canned water, that stuff in the air, and then it just goes up. I've been to the, um, Burkeville plant when it had a blast, and the dust stayed in the air and lingered. It lingered a while, quite a while, and it did not stay within the confound up before. It drifted on across. On over. It just kept going. Some of that, you cannot control all of that dust and the stuff that you blast with that comes in with that dust. So, what are you doing about that? What are you gonna do about it?
Now, you're sort of combining issues. The gas, the gases, you know, I could just.
Gas is mixed with the dust, right?
I could provide, I could provide the board. The board's interested. I could get some information on what's in that, uh, gas. I can't quote that, because I'm not a chemist.
But you do agree that it is mixed with the dust?
Dust is a separate issue.
The gas blows up, and it blows up. It's blowing up the ground. The ground, it creates the dust, right?
In most, in most cases, when that happens, there is some dust over the shot and it typically settles that. We do have to be careful if we shoot when it's windy, because on a windy day, it can move that dust some distance. That's something, that's something we, as the operators, have to be conscious of when we shoot and not make poor choices. There's a, there's a shot report for every shot. It has the weather conditions, the wind speed. Uh, DMV can come in and review those records anytime, and they do, they come in and review those blasting records.
Two, two quick other points that I just wanted to, thank you, Brian. Were there any other blasting questions?
I have a question for the hydrologist. Many of us have read and heard that when there's a quarry in an area that the water table drops everywhere now. All our water tanks.
What I can tell you is, I'm involved with monitoring of a lot of different quarries. Most of them are quarterly basis, some for numbers of years. And what we do is typically have monitor wells before quarries, or quarries that haven't even started, uh, and then monitor quarterly thereafter, um, and track that. And typically, if you, you look for monitoring trends, because the wells are generally on the perimeter of the site, you look for trends. In many quarries for years, you may not see any fluctuation in the water levels. What you typically see is you're going to see drawdown closer to the pit, and then it will go upwards out from the pit. Looking at some, you know, I guess, local monitoring data, I think there were about five years' worth of data at Prince Edward. Looking at five bedrock wells and the last monitoring event occurred in June. Water levels were all within the normal flake, uh, range of fluctuation, with exception of one well, which is actually higher water levels than it had been in five years. So, obviously, that's a, a new quarry and we've got a good track on what's going on. Groundwater fluctuation occurs seasonally, so we look at that. You know, in the summer months, it's generally down a little bit and it comes up in the winter. And we track that throughout the life of the quarries.
I understand you use well water on, on your quarries. Yeah. I mean, to use water to, for the rock and everybody? There's wells.
You use well water?
Yeah.
Some quarries may have well water, or some may not.
I understand that there's been four wells drilled over, on the, uh, over there.
Is that true?
We drilled it. Yes, four test wells, sir, that were, that were pump tested, monitored and pumped tested, yeah.
Looks like the media, Rock Bar is already here.
They have to do the testing before they can decide to proceed, basically, before you proceed to go on. It's like anything else. You've gotta do the testing. You've got to do the preliminary work.
They need to permit from the crew before you have any testing.
This is correct.
This is correct.
The hydro, the hydrogeology analysis, which is why, why those drills, wells were drilled, to do the pump tests, to see what in potential impact there would be from any drawdown. That's why those wells were drilled. That report that's created from that hydrogeologic analysis has to be submitted to DMN for them, in order for them to, as part of the permit application. So, they've gotta review that before they can actually approve the quarry.
I have a question, and it won't take but one minute. I'm the one that said I've lived on Custer Street since I was nine. I was born and raised in Crew, but I've lived on Custer Street since I was nine. Ms. Denson, will you buy our house? We almost have an acre of land over there that's gonna be right there beside Howard and Marjorie Jenkins. We've got four houses between us. Mr. Eames, can we move in your house and you move over there in ours? Robbie, how about you? You want our house? You wanna come over there and we'll swap places with you. I'll go down there and live in the bottom where you live now. Mr. Wilson, you don't live far from us. I've done you a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Any more, any more questions, uh? Luckstone, you have.
Certainly, we have to answer any questions, but I believe that's, that addresses most.
I had a question. If you, uh, while you're doing some work, if you come across an unmarked cemetery, maybe one we're not aware of, what's the procedure when that happens?
So, we would have to go to, uh, what's the, what's the correct regulatory, or, or unmarked cemetery?
It would be DNR.
Yeah, so it's Department of Natural Resources. We would have to go and let them know, um, they're gonna come out and do an investigation, see what the, you know, see if we can, you know, there's a process, try to figure out.
Sure.
Who, who they may belong to. Then there's a thirty day, I know there's a thirty day notice period. It goes in the newspaper to let people know that, you know, there was a, there was a cemetery that was discovered, so that people were aware in case, you know, it be relatives. And then, you know, we have to get a permit from DNR to, um, exhume those, those graves and, and move them to an appropriate burial place.
Okay. Uh, no shooting on a windy day. Now, you, uh, do you have a, a minimum, uh, wind level that, where you do not shoot? Or, I mean, if it's a three mile per hour wind or two mile per hour wind?
We, we, we do not. We do not have a numerical standard.
Okay. All right. Basically, what, what it's like during the day?
Because, as you know, the wind varies.
Sure.
Pretty rapidly, so it's, you know, when do you take that sample? It's, it's hard to quantify.
Okay, but we can impose that as a condition without any problem, correct? I mean, that wouldn't put you up if we, we said that.
Well, it, it would, because once we start loading the explosives in the ground.
Sure, sure.
Uh, we have to sit on.
Oh, if the wind picked up, right?
We can't let the explosives.
Right, okay, I understand. I understand, all right.
All other conditions, it's a judgment call before we decide whether we're shoot that day or not.
Okay, all right. Uh, seismograph monitoring, you say you can do that if council wants it? My guess is they're gonna want it done.
Yeah, and that would, I, I would suggest what we would do is, is, you know, we work, as Brian mentioned, we work with DMV as to where they're gonna wanna see seismographs, um, for their monitoring.
Okay.
And we place one there prior to, um, any blasting, and then we have those numbers and we can provide that to, to the town.
Okay. I know there was an allegation at the last planning commission that, uh, the wells in Prince Edward went down because of the quarry in Prince Edward, and I was submitted, uh, you guys, for the record, they submitted a report and basically said that was not the case. What actually happened was the wells went up, uh, in, in water.
Our, our monitoring wells.
Yeah. That's a, be the info. That was a state report, so that's all I had.
Luckstone, you all have any more comments?
Yes, sir.
If there's no further comments, then we'll.
I'd like to say something.
Yes, ma'am.
We would like for you to vote from your hearts.
Beg pardon?
We would like for you to vote from your hearts. Yes.
All right, we will close this public hearing, and I appreciate all of y'all coming. Comment, but we're always here and appreciated, and thank y'all very much.
We, uh, come back and do adjournment for the planning commission here.
The, the planning commission recommends progress.
Very well. Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions? All right. With that in mind, we will adjourn the planning commission meeting, and it is over. Thank you for the planning commission. At this time, I will, uh, take a motion to reopen the current town council meeting. All right, Ms. Denson, and second, Mr. Knight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by a like sign. All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion to reaffirm the vote to sell the property at, at the quarry, or, uh, sell the property at the Crew Industrial Park to Luckstone.
Mayor, before doing that, I just wanted to say, for the record, had Mr. Jones wanted to leave his proposal or entered his proposal in the public record, I would have gladly had reviewed it. Um, I'd still gladly review it for any other land that we might have or can purchase. I'd love to see his proposal, but given that he hasn't left his proposal, didn't wanna leave on your public record, we can't consider it.
I, I ask him. I ask him for it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I move that we affirm to sell, uh, the land to Luckstone under the conditions.
Did you just move that?
I did not.
Okay, all right. So, you made the.
I was seconded.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second to, uh, reaffirm the sale of the land at the Crew Industrial Park to Luckstone Corporation. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries. All right. Now, can we do the planning commission vote at this point? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
What's planning commission?
The, the recommendation.
Conditional use.
The conditional use permit.
The town. Well, the town council has to vote to accept or reject, uh, planning commission recommendations.
All right. At this time, sir, is there a motion to accept the planning commission recommendation on the conditional use permit for Luckstone operations at the Crew Industrial Park? Mr. Reed, is that, uh, Mr. Miskelik?
That was Mr. Abel.
Okay, Mr. Abel, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries.
What was the verbiage for that?
The verbiage was, uh, I, to approve the planning commission recommendation to approve.
A conditional use.
The conditional use permit. Long night.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, we may want to just clarify with an additional motion that the approval is to accept all of the conditions that were listed in the proposal set forth by Luckstone.
So, you need another motion for that? All right. On advice of attorney, we ask for a motion to approve all the conditions laid out in the conditional use permit, which there were twenty-seven, I think, twenty-six, is that right?
I move that we take the planning commission's recommendation.
Twenty-two, twenty-two conditions.
I move that we take the planning commission's recommendation to approve the conditional use permit, um, quarrying in accordance with the twenty-two conditions set forth by Luckstone.
Okay, we have a motion.
Do we need to also add the, the pre, pre-operational seismographs in that right now as well?
You all can.
Make it twenty-three conditions.
Okay, and we'll include the seismograph in that as well. Okay.
Any other things that we talked about? If we might want.
There wasn't anything else. Seismograph is the main thing.
I just can't even function.
All right. So, we have a motion by Mr. Reed. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Knight, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries. Have you got the verbiage on that?
No. Please tell me that's important.
Okay, all right. Good.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I can't process right now. My brain physically hurts.
Okay. So, with that in mind.
Much worse.
Attorney, town attorney, we've covered everything. Is that correct?
Yes.
All the blocks have been checked?
Yes, sir. Let me look them up. Yes, sir.
Okay. I would ask that the town manager tomorrow, or, or town clerk, listen to the tape, get the exact verbiage down, get the exact vote down, and transmit that to the Nottaway County Planning Commission and the Nottaway County, uh, Planning Commission's point of contact, Mr. Proceice. So, they've got it for tomorrow night. Okay. All right. With that in mind, we go to delegations from the public or citizens' comments. Mr. Foss. Nothing? Former, former councilman Foss. All right. With that in mind, there are no other further public delegations. We go to the consent calendar. Matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be approved by one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar at the request of a member of council and may be voted on separately. You will have in your packets minutes of the town council meeting held on nine July twenty eighteen, the bill sheet and the additions, which have just been handed out.
Make a motion to accept with the additions.
Mr. Knight has made a motion to accept with the additions. Mr. Abel is the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries. This time, we go to the town manager's report. This will include department head reports as needed to include street, water, sewer, and police. Mr. Town Manager.
Briefly, uh, I wanted to let everybody know that the tax situation that we're working on with the DMV stop, we've started that process. Normally, typically, we're advising customers when they come in, that they have delinquent taxes and they need to go ahead and take care of them before we put this, this in place. And so far, they've been very successful. A thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars has been collected in, and these are some pretty old personal property taxes, so. Uh, our next plan is to take the risk. We've organized. We've got it in good shape. And, uh, we'll go ahead and send file to DMV and put the stops on them. And these people will not be able to renew their license until they pay their taxes, so.
Very good.
I was gonna get into a little discussion that, thank Phil, Councilman, uh, Miskelik for bringing it to my attention, really to my attention, and we've got the potential problem with water. VCBR is gonna be expanding. He has more of those specific numbers, but basically, double in population before it's all over with. I'll assume it is until you tell me it's not, but we'll keep going. The problem we've gotten is our water plant operates basically sixteen hours a day. Any additional water customers or usage is gonna create a problem. I predict, if, if these numbers are true, we're gonna end up working twenty-four seven. What that's gonna do to us is operationally, it's gonna cause a problem. We're gonna have to hire additional operators, um, additional costs for treatment. And then, of course, the problem with raw water supply, uh, it's gonna get to be an issue. And Phil suggested, and I agreed with him, that we need to start some type of discussion with the state, because it's a possibility that we won't be able to supply them with water. Based on our agreement, uh, the way I understand it, we, we could give ninety days notice that we no longer provide them with water. We hope it doesn't come to that, and I'm just starting the process here, but, um, all of a sudden, it's hit me and again, thanks to Phil, that this thing could happen and it's gonna create a, a problem. So, I wanted y'all to be aware of it.
Question. Starting the conversation with the state, Mr. Miskelik.
So, uh, just, just to clarify, the current expansion is for, I believe, an additional. So, just, just to clarify, the current expansion is for, I believe, an additional 400 or so beds. The question was asked if, in the future, they wanted to expand further and increase it to 700, I believe, versus 800. That isn't to say that they're planning on doing it, it's if they did it in the future, would we be able to provide the water? And at that point, the answer is no.
Yes.
With the current proposed expansion.
Which is how much?
About 400.
So that'll give them 700 total right now?
Same money, same money. I thought it was like 750, I thought it was 350 on the first.
Right.
What, what I really feel like we need to do, and, and somebody needs to do, and I personally feel like the state needs to do it, is get some kind of study done on how it's going to affect.
Can you draft?
I've actually spoken with one of the assistant commissioners, who is going to be speaking with the architecture and engineering people tomorrow. And totally can reach out to you, or reach out to me if they have any.
I don't want to alarm anybody, but I'm just thinking.
Do we need a letter from the mayor to them, or do we need to, how do we, is the back channel better? You got it?
It's already.
You got it in hand?
And if, if we need anything else, they'll, they'll, I'll follow up regularly.
All right, if you need me to do something, just holler.
Sure.
If, if Luckstone were to put a quarry in, and if we were to reap some benefits from, from extra raw water supply, what would the timeline look like before we would see that?
Couple of years at least.
A couple of years? Yeah, I mean, the pit would have to open up and contain a certain mine, or capture a certain mine. I would say, you know, three to five years before you probably be able to notice anything.
So it's going to be three to five years before you start pumping in the Lazarota Creek?
No, in matter of use, but anything material.
Sure, right.
You know, it increases, I would say, three to five years.
What's the timeline for loading rail cars?
Loading rail cars? Oh, we can load a rail car in 12 minutes.
I know, well, what's the timeline?
Oh, when we first started construction of the property, I'd say we'd be loading rail cars maybe 12 months later. 10 to 12 months later.
Y'all already, this question was never asked. Have you already negotiated with Norwood selling as far as?
We have.
You have.
Okay, town manager?
That's all.
Okay, town attorney?
Yes, I'm going to pass around some building code ordinancees. The top two are the ones that I'm going to be drafting the public hearing notice for, and you all voted and approved at the last meeting, so I'll go ahead and get that out for next month's meeting. The last one in the stack is what was requested of me, which is the rental maintenance inspection ordinance. It's also important to note that the second ordinance that was requested of me won't really go into effect until the rental maintenance one does, so let me pass the. If you all will just take one out, the first ordinance just updates our building code to the 2012 edition, and then we'll have to update it again to 2015 shortly. The second one talks about fees, and that one won't really be relevant until we possibly adopt a third one. So in summary, I'm going to advertise for the public hearing on the first one, and then the second one and the third one are just for councils, councils, councils.
Got so many.
That's all I have.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all.
Actually, I had a quick question about water. Do you have water in your Burkeville plant that's accessible to, say, a state facility? Or could be accessible to be processed?
We can certainly check. I mean, the discharge is fairly rare. It's really, you know, only when we have excess water in the site, but we'll, for sure.
Okay, perfect.
See if there's some opportunity to work with y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. No action, okay, all informational?
No action.
Mayor's report? Nothing. Committee reports? Finance?
The bills are paid.
Personnel?
I wasn't here at the last meeting, maybe y'all talked about it. We interviewed several police officers and hired one. I think that's it.
Okay. Community development? Wendy's not here, where's Mr. Bradley? Whoop, there he is. Okay, good. Beautiful. Continuing business? Actually, we have none. We took care of that. Any?
Mayor, just the piece of continuing business from the, the resolution from, that was put into committee. Has that been looked at by a committee regarding economic development priorities?
Uh, probably not.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, that's, it's, we'll follow up on that.
Okay.
All right. Any new business?
I hate to say it, but yes. I, I'm sorry, I had a presentation, but I'm not going to give the presentation, I'm just going to be very brief. Very briefly, I have been working on a project with, with VML. So, basically background, when state facilities are put into localities, the localities have very little choice of the state facilities coming in. The local economies become dependent on the state facilities, then, of course, no state facility is expected to last forever. So the state facility pulls out with very little communication with locality, and the local economy suffers greatly because, again, the economy was dependent on it. I've got a bunch of passing figures I won't lay's over. Basically, what VML had, is probably going to put in their legislative package this year is support for this, this plan. It's a, it would create legislation that would require, that would keep localities informed on the likelihood of closures of facilities, compel state local collaboration on contingent planning for closures, provide resources for mitigating adverse economic impacts, and provide economic development subject matter expertise. So basically, I go through a bunch of different things, developing a tool to determine the likelihood of closure. If there's a high probability of closure within, so the localities kept informed. If, if they can't close a facility within, unless they have a high probability of closure rating within five years, and then contingency planning, once that five-year mark hits and there's a likelihood of closure, they would work with the locality to establish a five-year budget plan and economic development strategic planning. Also, we'd ask for funding to temporarily offset utility revenue loss, payment in lieu of taxes, help marketing surplus property, and economic development subject matter expertise. So, does all that make sense?
Sure.
Yes.
Perfect. I would like just, just support from the town, so that I could say that the town crew supports this.
Do you need a letter or a motion?
A motion.
Okay.
Or I can hold off until next meeting and send it all in.
So it's not time sensitive?
That's correct.
Can you draft, or basically make that into a PDF, send it to Wade, and he can get it out to everybody? And if you would also do a draft resolution that you think it's got all the verbiage checked off?
Perfect.
And then we'll, we'll bring it up and vote.
That'll work.
Is that good? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other new business? All right, point's personal privilege.
Pastor Matt.
I know I'm not really allowed, but no.
Thanks, Mr. Gunnar.
Thank you.
We lost John Spencer not too long ago.
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to mention.
We need a, do we need a resolution for, for John and Ray? Because we lost Ray too, and we haven't done a resolution yet.
I would like to see that, yeah.
All right. Can you take care of that?
Still can.
Absolutely.
All right. Tiffany, can you get to Mr. Miskovic all of the, the dates from, for John Spencer's service and Ray Houghton's service?
Yes.
And the town crew, thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none. We need no executive session, to the best of my knowledge. With that in mind, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
Mr. Knight, Mr. Bradley, second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, by a like sign. It is adjourned.